Okay, we're gonna, we'll call this meeting to order. CPS Energy Board of Trustees Meeting to be held on June 26, 2021 at 5:00, at 1:00 PM. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Ramirez to confirm the quorum.
Good afternoon, sir. We have Trustee Steen, Trustee Kelly, and yourself. So although all trustees are not present, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ramirez. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Rick Luna for the evacuation message, invocation, and pledge allegiance.
Before you start, Mr. Luna, I would like to note that the mayor arrived, and I have it at 1:02, so the mayor is here as well.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor.
Okay. Good afternoon, board members. Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. My name is Rick Luna, and I'm here to do the evacuation message. We wanted to review the evacuation procedures, so we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use a glass door exiting out of the door, the boardroom, to the outside. If that door is blocked, blocked, use the door at the rear of the room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of headquarters or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. Whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure to be safe always. Now, will you please stand with me for an invocation? We are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing important responsibilities. We ask that you guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Help us to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. Help us to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to fulfill our obligations to our community. Now, if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Loretta Kerner for public comments. And we have Ms. Gonzalez joining us.
Thank you, sir. I have 1:05, and all trustees are now present. Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. The next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. Here's how the process will work. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, with in-person commentators speaking first, followed by virtual commentators. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they are going to speak about. For this meeting, we have two registered speakers who will speak in person, and we have no registered speakers who will speak virtually. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Our first in-person speaker is Todd Havacost, followed by Richard Pettis.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Havacost. I'm here today representing Northwest Community Church, owner of Site 4, for, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 11, the Tezal Road Substation. Our church is located 8900 Gilbo, adjacent to Sites 3, 4, and 5 for the substation. I'm a member of our Board of Elders, the leadership body of our church. Church would like to thank the board for the opportunity to provide public input today. As an earlier part of the public input process, our church submitted a letter requesting that the CPS Board approve the selection of Site 5 for the Tezal Substation as recommended by the CPS project team. Our two-page letter is included as Pages 104 and 105 of today's agenda packet. We subsequently submitted a list of names and signatures of 95 other adults affiliated with our church, also indicating their support for the selection of Site 5, and those signatures also in your agenda packet. I want to highlight one point from our letter, namely the integral role Site 4 plays in our overall ministry and facility plan of our church. We formerly owned 12 acres adjacent to our property to the south. In 2008, we sold 10 acres of that land to a developer who went on to develop the Bristol Apartments. During the process of completing that sale, our church subdivided the tract, selling 10 acres and retaining the 2 acres adjacent to our property. We went through that effort to subdivide the larger tract to retain potential ministry expansion opportunities that might require additional land, such as parking and buildings. So this 2-acre plot of land, now known as Site 4, came into existence explicitly for this purpose. Since selection of Site 4 for the substation would eliminate the expansion options for our church that drove the original subdividing and retention of that property, we're requesting that this impact to landowner development be weighed heavily as you reach your decision. And we, and all interested parties, are fortunate that CPS had the foresight to proactively purchase Site 5 last year, which provides a fully viable alternative, and that involves no impact to landowner development. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide input today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next in-person speaker is Richard Pettis.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Pettis. I am the president and CEO of a small not-for-profit located here in San Antonio called the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, and it's my pleasure to be here today to join you and to make a couple of comments on you all's agenda. And my message is very simple, and the simple message is this: You all are doing exactly what you need to do. There is so much growth happening in this community. I was just at the groundbreaking for the expansion of 1604, miles and miles of expansion. There are buildings going up all over this community, housing, commercial development, and new businesses looking to come to San Antonio every day, and you continue to be focused on the work of CPS Energy. Flex Step, Flex Power Bundle, the budget, the financial plan, you continue to do the long view for what this community needs to thrive. All the things that have happened with Storm Uri and all the other things with COVID, you all continue to maintain that long-term view that is so necessary for this community. You are an economic development tool, and you are an economic development generator with the thousands of jobs and the millions of dollars in innovation and investment that you put into this community. And so I say thank you. Thank you for continuing to keep that long, ball view of what we need for this community. It is the right thing, and you all are to be commended for your good work. I know the pay is not very good, but I can tell you that your work is impactful and making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you for your input, and that was our last registered speaker, Dr. Mackey.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Cole Williams for her CEO report.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you, Board of Trustees, and for those in our community who are listening today. I have a couple of highlights for my report today with additional context, and I should be able to get through these fairly swiftly. So I can't talk enough about, and I think every time I have the opportunity to do so, I will continue to promote the fact that we've had wonderful service by Trustee Kelly. He is heading up the committee with Chair Dr. Mackey in search for a new Board of Trustee member, and our search process has begun. We have started promoting on social media. Our printed media will start very shortly here, in the next week or so. And so we want to continue to promote and ask people to, who are interested in serving on this board, it is, I think, one of the most complex boards in the community. We do have a full agenda of things that are important, and finding a board member, which I know is the board's primary objective in the near future, is something that the staff wholeheartedly supports. I did want to highlight a copy of the website, which is there on the report, and there is a button there to be pushed so that people can search and determine which quadrant they live in. All our board members actually serve our entire certificated area. We have had a process tied to the boundaries of Bear County that goes ahead and splits the service territory in four quadrants. And for those four quadrants, we split them up, and so to get representation from where people live, we, the board selects from each specific quadrant. But in reality, I think all board members tend to be of service to the entire community. So the process is there to support, and we are looking now for, I think, Quadrant 1 is a search process. But the website is established and should be very helpful to anyone who is interested in serving. I wanted to follow up, my next item, I wanted to follow up a bit more on our material issues that we're having in inventory. Our supply chain group is working very closely with our operations area and really addressing the issues, and we have not gotten to a place where we have had our work stopped. But I will say that there's a lot of creativity in pulling other utilities, looking to see if anyone across the nation has some of the stockout, potential stockout materials. There's just a lot of creativity going. The issues are being caused by some raw material challenges, some being driven by a lack of drivers to transport the materials. There's just a pretty good range. And again, when I visited with other executives, even on an international basis, there are all kinds of issues with semiconductors and, you know, different material sources that are a challenge. We are hearing more and more of our peers talk about these outages. They are, in some cases, short-term, weeks. We have heard in some companies, they're experiencing much longer lead times to acquire materials. We will continue to keep you all updated. We are concerned that we work very closely with our development community to make sure that we have all the materials that they need to support what projects they have going. So far, so good, but we will continue to have to put a lot of focus on this. And again, we'll keep the board and the community updated about any challenges we have in reaching materials and whether or not it will slow down operations. So far, so good, but a key red flag area for us to watch. As I mentioned also last time, you know, I think this is going to be persistent for a very long time. We are seeing increasing labor pressures at all levels, again, of the organization, from our wage scale workers, frontline workers, all the way up to executives. It is a seller's market, and so there is pretty fierce competition for people. Some people are repurposing their careers, they're changing their careers, they're changing what they're looking for, and there's a lot of interest in certain careers to work almost 100% remote. And so all of these challenges, we are currently trying to deal with and trying to keep our recruiting fresh. What I did highlight for you right here is a small chart that indicates, and it's not just us, when the Federal Reserve has been comparing where we are now with statistics back from the fall of 2019, we are seeing that just about every industry is having problems sourcing talent. And again, it's happening at the frontline, the middle levels of the company, and at the highest levels of the company. It's skill-driven, it's talent and competency-driven, it's just all the way across, and so we're trying to be really sensitive of that. And right now, I would tell you that we continue to have and deploy our strategic hiring freeze, but we are below the targets that we set for the hiring freeze as well. So we're going to have to keep monitoring that availability of talent and, again, keep you updated. Another highlight I want to indicate is that we continue to have discussions with all the rating agencies. We've, in the last about month, we've talked to every single rating agency. They're just touching base with us and looking at our plans, how we're coming through for the current year, what are projections, all types of questions. They're looking at everything from E S G, focus on the environment, sustainability and governance, to, again, how are we managing our forecasts going forward. So far, so good. They have shown quite a bit of interest in our Flex Power Bundle and are taking this up on the offer to get updates about that, just like we are giving to the board. So again, strategically, I think we're in a good place, and we continue to make ourselves available to the rating agencies, as usual, regardless of what's happening in travel. We do anticipate that they might even start some traveling out to the different client areas. We have typically traveled to see them, and now we have an open invitation that they seem interested to come here. We will try to coordinate, again, if we can, a visit where they can potentially visit us at a board meeting as well. I'm on page 5, my next point, just a general update on the RAC, talked about it before. I want to highlight, there have been five meetings so far, and the RAC, as led by Chair Williams and Chair, Vice Chair Portillo Morales, have met with all the members and had orientation. We've given them CPS Energy overview. We've had a couple of sessions on rate design and trends. Our consulting group, the Brattle Group, has been attending these meetings and providing quite a bit of context to all the members. We've had great attendance by the members and engagement, lots of great questions. Last week, they actually went through the cost of service review, which is a basic foundation of how rates are looked at from a cost perspective. Again, Brattle Group handled the majority of those questions, but our team also has supported the group very closely. They have an upcoming session on August 5th, where they'll be asking CPS Energy more questions. We're going to try to make that an engaging session where we get their input and their ideas and thoughts and really try to address them in a dialogue. And then I wanted to highlight that as the Rate Advisory Committee members are asking questions, we're capturing those questions and we're posting them online for the benefit of the members and for the benefit of the community. So those will be a reference for everyone. I did want to hit a couple of things that you'll hear today. You asked for at the last meeting an update on STEP, and so you will get one. I just want to just preview that to indicate that the board and the council have approved funding for STEP through July of 2022. Now, so the program is what the board and the council focus on for approval, and it runs through, from approval from the board, ordinance, an ordinance that allows us to capture our costs. We catch it subsequent to actually occurring it and proving up the megawatts that we have provided as savings. Underneath that, our contracts for vendors, and the team has gone through and put out an RFP, a global RFP. We're very excited about doing the new programs and the new ideas. We will be bringing that forward in the fall, but we also have a segment called Tried and True. Those are energy efficiency programs, weatherization programs, and you'll get a preview of where we are, and you'll get a preview of some procurement recommendations that we're going to make in August. We have refreshed the focus on energy efficiency and conservation for residential and commercial. They'll be ready to make those new proposals to take us all the way through the July 22nd timeframe, and they will also make some proposals for renewal options if those vendors continue to perform. And on weatherization, we plan to take that RFP and recast it. We see that there are a lot of high-performing subcontractors in that program, and we know that there are interests by some of the subcontractors not to be subs, and so we want to refresh that whole view and take that out and look at a way to potentially have more directs, more primes, and subcontractors on that one. So you'll get a preview of that. You will get a foundational look at the budget planning. Our CFO is going to talk about the questions that you've been asking. We did have a challenge, Vice Chair asked a question about could we break the spend down by zip code? We could not, but we were able to break it down, and we'll have a supplement. We broke it down by quadrant, so we'll show some information on that, and that'll be a highlight as part of the CFO's presentation. And then we'll talk about our customers. We have been working on our programs with them since last March. We've done our outreach, we've got a lot of work going. We are making the plans for trying to get back to the new normal and getting our processes all back in check, and so you'll have an update from our Vice President of Customer Success is going to talk about those processes, including how we propose to approach re-establishing disconnects. I just, the highlight on that is, we ultimately want to help all customers. We don't want people disconnected, and so we're going to continue to work with them. We're going to give the most time that we can to the customers who are on affordability discount programs, because we know they need the most help, but you'll get a highlight of how we propose that will look. Additional items on today's agenda, just to highlight, the budget is coming back to you again, this is part 5. Again, it has a provisional rate increase, not a request for approval of a rate increase. Any requests that we make, which could happen as early as the fall, will be separately presented to the board, and so we are not making a proposal on a rate increase, but we do, as Trustee Kelly indicated, need to highlight the budget we're managing to. You will hear about a substation inciting recommendation that the staff has to try to improve reliability in the northern part of our service territory. That's the Tezal Substation item on Item 11. You will also get an update on the Flex Power Bundle. After this meeting, we have put off a lot of issues, just things that we need to catch up on for the PFC. So we will request your indulgence, try to move as fast as possible, and try to get to some important PFC items for today. So we'll go a little bit longer, and those are my highlights and the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Cole Williams. Does the board have any questions or comments, Mrs. Steen?
So first, a comment. I think you articulated very well in talking about filling Trustee Kelly's position about our role on the board, and I think it's important to understand that we've got a fiduciary responsibility to the community and that we're not, and I think you said it well, we're not, in a sense, representatives of a certain geographical area of the city. What's sometimes confusing is, I think, when we set up the, when they set up way back when, the quadrants, I think the goal then was to achieve geographical diversity on the board, which we've been able to do, but I think sometimes it's confusing, because people think, I even get calls like that, where people begin the call by saying, well, you're my representative on the CPS Energy. I have to explain to them, I said, I'm glad to take your call, but I'm a trustee for the entire service area and entire community. On the RAC, I noticed that we have the Brattle Group. Remind me again of who they are and what role they're playing in RAC.
The Brattle Group is an industry player that is typically out there and provides quite a bit of support to everyone from utilities. I think the city has used them as well for analysis and evaluation, so they do a lot of analytical work. We've used them for different things in the past, but we did an RFP process, and they came through with the strongest experience in this area. So what they are is a resource to the RAC, and so they provide information to them about what is being seen as an industry process, what other communities have done or are doing, so for their experience, they provide that as a resource to the RAC.
Thank you. Any other questions from any of the board members? If not, we'll move on to item number 5, optimized budget planning now and in the future. Ms. Cole Williams?
Okay. Well, actually, I am going to tell you that that was my part 1. I'm going to pull up for part 2, Rick Luna, to give you a little bit more specifics on the Flex Step. I'll do that very quickly, and then we'll move on to item 5.
Thank you, Paula, and good afternoon, trustees. As Paula mentioned, I'm here to give an update on Flex Step, as you requested last month, and... There we go. Okay. As Paula mentioned, we do have board and city council authority for Flex Step under our STEP Bridge ordinance that was approved twice, earliest, most recently in January. So I'll talk a little bit about that and where we are in context of that overarching goals and objectives, but also want to talk about the underlying procurement that is a board item and that we'll be coming back to you with in August, and want to give you some of the context for our thinking around that recommendation that's coming. So if we can start with this slide as a framework, we've shown this before. What we try to do with this slide is really encapsulate, you know, our strategic approach to Flex Step. As you know, we've got lots of experience with helping our customers save energy and save money under our STEP program and now under our STEP Bridge program, and we've developed a roster of what we call Tried and True programs that have demonstrated their value, their value to our customers. But as we look to the future, we've talked a lot about flexible path. We know that that's focused on new and innovative technologies, and it's really the combination of the two that we think make Flex Step work. And so I want to, again, frame this up, because it really plays into how we have tried to execute on this strategy through some RFPs and then through some recommendations that will be coming to you, both in August and later in the year. So if we can start with where we currently are, again, we have authority from the board and the council for continuation of our STEP programs under the STEP Bridge, and we're happy to say that that progress is now back and continuing. We did have a pause early during the COVID-19 pandemic, but we're now ramping those programs up and have made significant progress towards achievement of these goals. So we're operating in that STEP Bridge area there in the middle, and we have authority to spend up to $70 million and do so by July of 2022 with a megawatt goal of 75 megawatts. So we will then come to you with a recommendation, and to the council with a recommendation for the Flex Step program subsequent to the end of STEP Bridge. So this is where we stand to date. We just completed our annual verification process. This is required by ordinance, is to demonstrate that the savings have in fact been achieved and that all of our vendors have performed as stated in our reporting. And we have an outside firm that does this. We delivered the report to the city in May, and what it showed is that we had an incremental gain of 81 megawatts of savings for FY '21. So on a cumulative basis, you'll recall originally STEP had a 771-megawatt goal. We've now achieved 926-megawatts cumulative, so we have exceeded that goal and continue to add to that. Specifically, in FY '21, we had 1,700 homes weatherized, 4,400 solar systems installed by customers on their home or business, which is a record year, and in total, we had almost 56,000 energy efficiency rebates that we paid to customers. So we certainly thank the community for continuing to support STEP. And so transitioning a little bit to the future, Paula mentioned an RFP. Back in February, we issued a global request for proposals, looking for partners and vendors who would help refresh our roster of programs, and we did that, again, in two parts. We did the Tried and True, which are the demonstrated programs that we believe have value, continuing value to our community, and that we would look to continue, not just in STEP Bridge, but even in Flex Step. And then we've got Part B, which represents the new and innovative ideas, that we're really looking for the vendor community to bring us their looking for the vendor community to bring us their best. And then we can sort through and find the ones that we think represent the best opportunities to incorporate into the portfolio. So want to talk a little bit about, you know, we've got this RFP out there. Want to talk a little bit about sort of how we align and sequence all of this activity. You can see there on the bottom, we've got Step Bridge. We still have that program continuing through next year, middle of next year, with a transition to Flex Step after that. And so sort of working upwards, what you see is a timeline where what we are proposing to do is to bring you recommendations for the tried and true portion, which again, those are the existing programs. We would continue those at Step Bridge, bring that to you in August, and then come back in the fall with recommendations around new programs that would become part of the Flex Step program. All throughout this, of course, customer stakeholder engagement continues and we'll have a slide that talks more about what we're doing in that area. So a little more about the RFP. We received 52 responses. These were due at the end of April. Again, in two parts, part A, the tried and true, we had 12 responses and 21 proposals. One respondent could have multiple proposals and that's why the number is a little bit higher there. And so that was focused on our residential, commercial rebate programs and weatherization. And then over on the right, our innovative and new, this is the call for new ideas. We had 40 responses, 66 different proposals across a variety of technologies and opportunities that are out, that were identified by vendors and partners. So we have a cross-functional team that's been evaluating these RFPs very intensively. And we'll talk a little bit more detail here about how we're approaching that work. So when we talk about tried and true, I'm digging in a little deeper here on some of the detail. So what are the programs that encompass that? We've got demand response, first of all, and on a day like today, which is a hotter summer day, you know, these programs really have value in terms of allowing us to reduce the amount of energy that's required to serve the community. And so we do that through a variety of demand response programs. Probably the one you're most familiar with is thermostats. We have thermostat customers who allow us to adjust, you know, voluntarily allow us to adjust their temperature by a few degrees. Next, we've got our solar programs. Probably our most popular program is the solar rebate program. Again, we had a record year last year and we're seeing that trend continue in this year. Going into the next element of tried and true, and this is what we'll be talking about more in the procurement piece, is our residential and commercial energy efficiency programs. So think of these as rebates that customers qualify for when they replace an air conditioner, they install insulation in their home, maybe they participate in a school program. All of those fall under that umbrella. And then finally, we've got our weatherization and Casa Verde program, which is a large commitment we have to help our customers most in need to weatherize their home and improve the comfort of their home while saving money. So these are the ones that we're going to talk about a little more in terms of how we operate those. And those are procurements that are board level procurements. And so I think it's worth spending a little more time on exactly how those programs work and traditionally, and as well as how we're thinking about them in the future. So if we start with the residential and commercial programs, again, these are rebate programs. For the most part, customers, you know, may be changing to get an equipment or something in their home and they want to qualify for a rebate. If they're a residential customer, those programs are generally pretty straightforward. And we have an administrator who works on our behalf as a third party that will accept those rebates, will pay those rebates. They'll make sure that they qualify as needed and then they'll maintain all of the records for the program. Likewise, we have another vendor who does the same as the administrator for our commercial programs. And now those projects are more complex. They require more engineering, more customized work. And so you see here, this is a look at our budget for these programs and the allocation of the dollars between customer and administrator. And what you'll see here is, you know, these are board level procurements again because they're large contracts, they have lots of dollars attached to them. But underlying to that is, underlying that is, most of the dollars are paid to customers through rebates on our behalf. And so you'll see the makeup there in orange of the rebate portion. And then the administrator portion is the lesser amount. So we share that with you because we want to talk about weatherization and why we think there's an opportunity to do things a little bit different with weatherization. In the case of the weatherization program, a customer applies for the program and if they qualify based on their income and their home is eligible, then they come into the program. And we have a prime contractor who works for CPS Energy, who then qualifies them. They do the marketing for the program. And then they subcontract the work to a local company that goes out and actually makes the improvements to the customer's home. And so if you look at the, on the right-hand side, at the way that the spending is broken down on this one, 11% is the administrator piece. Really, the bulk of the money, 90%, is the work that occurs in the home. And again, this flows through subcontractors, which we have four of them that do all of the work on behalf of the program. So now getting a little deeper into the detail there, you see on the right-hand side, this is the last two fiscal years. And you'll see, as I mentioned, we have four local companies that do this work in the home. And then this shows you their breakdown. Again, these are local companies. And what we've been thinking a lot about is, you know, reimagining our weatherization program to create an opportunity for these companies, the local diverse businesses, to grow into a larger administrative function. Again, today, that's done by a prime. We think that there's a model that we can build where more of those prime functions flow to these smaller companies that again, are locally based and diverse. And so what we'd like to propose is reimagining, again, our model for weatherization and tell you that we're developing an RFP that will be released soon that bridges sort of this new model into the future of Flex Step. And so in August, we'll be coming to you with a request to extend our current contract with the prime that we have today to allow us to complete the Step Bridge program and then build this new model and then bring you a recommendation for how we implement that as part of Flex Step. And so just digging a little deeper into that, what I want to do here is just preview for you, two items that we will be bringing to you in August. Again, for our residential and commercial energy efficiency programs, we have been through the RFP process. We have identified vendors who would implement those programs for us and serve for us under the Step Bridge program. And then based on performance, continue into Flex Step. So that would be one item. And then secondarily, for weatherization, is ask for additional funding to continue with our existing firm through the end of Step Bridge with the idea that we would implement this new model, this new weatherization model into the Flex Step program, which would start next year. And we would bring you a recommendation on that in the fall. Okay, my last slide is, I mentioned earlier, continuing stakeholder engagement. Just want to let you know that we continue to engage with our customers, engage with key stakeholders. We've been doing presentations. We've been talking to the media to really highlight the value of our programs. So for example, our demand response programs, we've been talking a lot about those in the media and continuing to ramp up our events and our opportunities to engage with customers. We also have some new website content that's coming and some new sentiment surveys to refresh the analysis that we've already been doing, but to get a more, you know, current take on customers' opinions of programs, which ones are right for them. And so we'll continue to do that over the next several months as we build up to then returning to the board in the fall. And with that, I thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Luna, thank you. Excellent presentation. I do have a question. We have a prime contractor and I'm getting reports that the prime is not paying six, seven, and eight months late on small businesses here. And I cannot support this if we're not paying our subcontractors on time and it's not happening. And I would like, when you bring this, I would like to know that all the prime contractors, that they're caught up on all their subcontractors and it's paid up. Because if it's not, I want to know upfront before I vote. You please take care of that for me.
Absolutely, sir. And we are familiar with that complaint and have looked into that. And we can share the data. We don't believe it's as long as that. There have been occasional delays of shorter time periods, but we can certainly produce the data to show you exactly what has happened there.
Now, I know you don't believe it, but it was brought to my attention and it was showed to me how late they are on the work that they're completed. And instead of somebody just saying that, if you would look at it, look at that, because two, not one subcontractors, two.
Okay.
So I'm not saying anybody is not telling the truth, but I would ask for you to look into that because two of them, four, five, and six months late are getting paid. And that's a negative reflection on us if we, you know, for doing that. So if you would
Understood.
And you know, if I'm asked a question, if I ever ask a question, I already know the answer and I'm going to follow up with them to make sure they pay.
Very good. We will do that, sir. Thank you.
A couple of them. What is our current, when was the last time our small business policy was updated? I think the last time I looked at it was another vendor reaching out. I think I saw the number 2018, 14, is that correct?
Are you asking about our procurement policy for small businesses?
Yes.
I'm not able to.
I don't know if we have one that you've been talking about. We're talking about creating one more.
There was one that was shared with me. I believe Lisa Lewis provided that.
We have a strategy to target
Right.
Yeah, smaller vendors.
Before we, I would support anything. I would like to revisit what that strategy is. And then from a policy perspective, then, once we have our policies in place, like for example, if we're adhering to small business guidelines, which I believe is one of the things that we ask people to fill out when they're a vendor, what is your code? Are you registered with a small business? And so we tend to use that in our procurement strategy. You know, the small business has a policy about net 45 prompt payment policy for small business under a certain threshold. So I kind of go back to before I'm presented with anything, I want to make sure that we review the small business strategy or whatever policies we have in place because you will not get any support from me until that is updated. Because I believe it was in the late 20s, 2018, 2014, the last thing I read. I could be wrong, but I don't think it was as recent as last year. So that's one thing. The other thing that I would like to see is what is the analytics for all those social media channels that we use? What is the analytics for newspaper? What is, for all the communication strategies or channels that we have out there, what is the KPIs that we're measuring? What is the engagement for social media? When we use Instagram or whatever we're using, what's the reach? What's the engagement? What's the likes? What are the results? I think that, again, we do a lot of outreach. And I will tell you that I probably have participated in more events than, I don't know, most people around this table in person and online. And I can tell you that our engagement when it comes to social media is lacking. I can tell you the engagement when we show up to in person, I've only done one this year, was also lacking. So I go back to, if I represent a quadrant, and I don't know how many people live in what I represent, right? I can tell you that the population, probably District 117, is what, 300,000, 500,000? Do you know? Mayor? District 117. And the average participation is less than 50 people? I'm guessing. So as we move forward and we refine what we do and knowing that we're again facing a potential aversion of shutting down again, most likely, how are we going to refine how we engage is really my question. And in challenging time when people have other priorities, I think it's really hard for me to make decisions for 50 people participating with multimillion dollar decisions and changing the life of somebody's quality of life when we make big decisions. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Any other board member, any other questions?
Yeah, let me just mention a couple of things. First, Mr. Luna, I want to congratulate you on the great job you've done over the years I've been on the board. It's been, I've heard your presentations a number of times and you've always been very well prepared and I appreciate that. I haven't made any secret, though, of the fact that I think the STEP program is probably one of the most ridiculous programs I've ever seen. And the fact that we have spent almost three quarters of a billion dollars. If we fund this next tranche that you're talking about, we will have spent right at $800 million on this program. And it did not add one penny to the balance sheet, not a dime. If you, if you keep doing that, this company is going to go busted at some point. This is not a charity. It is a company that has to operate. And at some point, the analysts are going to look at this and say, these guys are nuts. We can't support this type of a company. We can't tell our investors to buy bonds in this type of company. Let me just give you an example. At least the board, if you look on page 70 of our current book, you'll notice that we are suffering a real degradation in our debt to capital ratio. We've been working for years, that ratio got up 62%, 63%. We worked for years to get it down to 60. And we broke under 60 for just a very short time. We had 59.8, if I recall. Now we're projected to go to 65%. Let me tell you one reason that we're doing that. I know that most of you don't like to talk simple balance sheet, but let me just go to economics 101 or accounting 101. When you take 750 or 800 million dollars of cash out of your balance sheet, something's got to change. Your assets just went down by that amount of money. Your liabilities didn't change. You didn't reduce any debt. So what did change? Your net worth. Your net worth went down 750 or 800 million dollars. You could have built a power plant. You could have done a huge solar plant. You could have done a huge wind plant. You could have put assets on the balance sheet for 800 million dollars. We just wrote checks to people and got zero on the balance sheet and were wondering why our debt to capital ratio is shooting up. Well, because we're draining assets and not adding to the balance sheet. We keep doing, and I'm just going to say, guys, I know you're going to keep doing this stuff and I'm going off the board, but I would ask you, going forward, every now and then, just every now and then for kicks, take a look at the financial statement. Because I can promise you, analysts look at it every day. We've got $6 billion of debt in the marketplace and these analysts are telling their investors, go ahead and buy this debt. These guys can pay it back. At some point, they're going to say, don't buy that debt anymore. These idiots can't pay it back because they're doing stupid things. So take, I know you don't like to talk accounting. I understand that. Cash flow is a dirty word. Let me tell you something, guys. You can have all of the greatest aspirations for charity in the world, but if you don't have assets, they're worth a zero. Talk to any charity who has great, great aspirations but no cash, they go out of business. And people accuse us of not doing enough. Do you realize we fund 30% of the city budget and I'm told that roughly 20% of the city budget goes to welfare? And if that's true, and we're funding 350 million a year, that means 70 million of our money goes to welfare. This company's doing a hell of a job, guys. And so all I'm saying is, there is a link between all of this charity stuff we're doing and the balance sheet. And the balance sheet, at the end of the day, is going to determine the success of this company. And so take a look at that 65%. That may not bother anybody on this board or anybody in this room. It does bother me. It will bother an analyst when they look at it. And so let's start looking for productive assets, not giveaways.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other questions for Mr. Luna, Mayor?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. You know, from my perspective, I don't think STEP needs to be defended. I do want to call out slide six. Since the STEP program began in FY09, you're showing 926 megawatts of savings for the customer, which in my mind is balance sheet numbers as well. What I would like to see in terms of STEP impact, this is a conversation that we've had over the last many years, is the impact distributed across our customer base, particularly as it relates to solar adoption. We know there's an extraordinary opportunity with solar benefit, particularly with the new programs, Community Solar, et cetera, for the southern sector, which has been undersubscribed relative to the rest of the customer base simply because there's less capital opportunities there. So if we could see in the next presentation also where the distribution of these benefits is on our customer base, that would be helpful. The other thing I'd say is that as we move forward, some additional information, and I do support what Trustee Gonzalez was saying about procurement and our policies regarding diversity. But if we could see also some of the types of responses we're getting in terms of the innovation aspects of the FlexSTEP program, that would be, that would be helpful as well so we can anticipate what kinds of things y'all will be looking at in the next phase. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Luna.
You're welcome.
One more, one more question. I think the challenge, and I will agree with Mr. Kelly in many ways. I am a small business owner, so I do look at the balance sheet. I think that one of the hardest things that's hard for me to accept sometimes on CPS's board is that we do write a lot of checks to a lot of people and yet we weigh how we value when we bring in a high-end consultant versus a small business. I think that is one of the challenges is that, you know, as a small business owner, my biggest overhead is talent. The average salary at Webbit is $75,000, you know? Why I do three jobs, CEO, COO, business development, is because you need a programmer at $125,000, right? So I would say that to dismiss that those of us on this board don't look at our balance sheet and don't, you know, don't know what it is to meet payroll and doesn't know what it is to be innovative and meet goals, is why I ask. I think the challenge here is how do we quantify a lot of the warm and fuzzy presentations we get? So for example, I would like to know, okay, so where's the drill down? How does a weatherization program benefit the SA Tomorrow Plan? How do we quantify that what we're doing helps somebody else pay, buy groceries versus not being able to buy groceries because their bill went down? I think we do a really poor job of quantifying, not quantifying, you know, the intangibles of what we do. It's no different than my industry. People don't see value sometimes in what we do in the tech world. They just want the convenience of the result of what innovation that we produce. I get to order faster, you know? I get to move my, you know, Wi-Fi thermostat, you know, a little bit higher or lower. But nobody cares about the in-betweens of what we do. So I go back to, I still think we do a poor job of quantifying the social impact and the mandate that we're being asked to support by our mayors and many in this community. They want us to address, how do we impact the environment? They want us to address, how do we impact equity? How do we address, again, so many different things? And I cannot ask for a dashboard report today that tells me anything. I always have to hear, I can't do it by zip codes. I don't understand how we can't do any of these things. I'm in the industry where real-time information is available. We have the right systems in place, right? So I do care about the balance sheet. I'm probably a lot more conservative than most people think on this board because I am self-made. I watch every penny that comes into my organization, just like I'm very mindful of every penny that we spend at CPS. And so there's a lot of spending that we do sometimes that we don't hesitate to hire a lawyer and spend a million dollars with the lawyer. But we're going to hesitate to spend a million dollars in 78207, you know, or with a small business because they're small, you know? So I go back to, this organization is pulled in a lot of directions and we have a fiduciary responsibility in everything that we do. And it needs to be viewed through a lens of financial responsibility and equity. So I agree with a lot of things that Mr. Kelly says because he is right. But at the same time, it is our responsibility, senior executives need to be very careful in how they spend the money, you know? I can only guide and suggest, but ultimately, you guys are here every day making those decisions. So it is an expectation that we balance that budget. And then we do everything that's being asked of us and have a fiduciary responsibility to all the constituents that we serve. So I don't take that lightly. I am a small business owner who looks at her balance sheet every day and I have to make some really tough decisions, even with a small business, you know? It's really about economic development, affordability, and reliability, whether it's a small organization or a large organization, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Hey, I'm looking at this on the bottom of page six where it says 9 million and 16, it's $9 million saved. And I keep looking at that and I'm seeing this. We say we spend $800 million.
That's megawatt.
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 Energy.
Yeah, not her megawatt saved. How do we justify, quantify? How do we say that we save that much? I don't see that, you know? How's that happen?
We can share the detail behind that, sir.
Yeah, just put it behind and I can.
Yeah, we can do that.
Please, next time you give it, if you do that, I sure appreciate that.
Okay.
If you could, just one, one minute of comment. We will take all your questions and do our best. We understand the many things that you want us to make sure we address and we will and will hopefully be ready by August. We do, you know, we do have to clarify, the way this program works, we get money for this program. It rolls through the bill. It's not an asset because what we're buying is we're buying different investments that the customer owns. So these are, these are tangible assets like thermostats and, and other investments in their, in their, being able to make their house more tight so it doesn't emit. But they're the customers' assets. Because they're the customers' assets, we can't capitalize that. That is an investment to help them save money. We make money because the board and the council allow us to recover a cost, the cost that it took to make that, plus the administrative costs to administer the program. So it isn't, it isn't that we put this money in there and there's no recovery. There isn't an asset because we're not building a power plant. But there's an asset in the community because whatever they get allows them to save energy over time. So I just want to make sure that nobody believes that there isn't a recovery. The ordinance that the, that the board, the board allows us to go to the council, the council approves the ordinance, we get money back. We get 70 million back into.
You get the money back from your customers.
Yes.
I'm the one that's giving you the money.
You give us money for power plants?
It's money going into the company. Yeah, you're getting it back.
Yes, we're getting it back.
Getting it back from me.
We get money back from you for everything. We're a cost-plus business.
That doesn't mean that you're not getting it in money that could have gone on the balance sheet.
Yeah, but I want to make sure.
And the fact that you've saved 9 million megawatts, we could have sold 9 million megawatts and made money off it. Where do you get your income from?
You don't have debt.
Selling megawatts.
You don't have debt that goes with that.
You've got a filthy plant.
Yeah, but that would have been 100% financed.
$9 million worth of.
Not trying to make you upset, sir.
Revenue.
Not trying to make you upset.
Don't need that circular BS, okay?
No, sir, not trying to make you upset.
I don't need that, Paula.
No, but.
Grow up. I'm above that, okay?
No, sir, I have to, I have to give you facts.
Thank you, Ms. Gold Williams. Mr. Kelly, thank y'all very much. And we'll, and thank you, Mr. Luna.
Dr. Mackey.
Mr. Steen.
So Mr. Kelly raised this issue about our debt-to-equity ratio and going up to 65%. I guess it's shown for fiscal year 2022, 65.09%. And tying that into the STEP program. And I think before we leave this topic, maybe you ought to address that.
Well, the, the increase in the debt-to-equity ratio is happening because all the costs across the business are going up. And so just as we had a discussion, labor is going up. And the scarcity behind materials is turning into higher prices of materials. Everyone else has had a cost escalation. We haven't had a rate increase in seven years. And so when you have that much pressure on your top line and all your costs are going up, that's what primarily is causing the gap. There is a liquidity, just one, there's a delay in liquidity of when you get that money back because it takes about 18 months to get it back. But you get it back. You get all the costs associated with the program. So I'm just saying, that's not the primary driver of the gap in the, in the debt-to-equity. This is, we keep managing to try not to have a rate increase in general and every other cost that we have is going up. It's bigger. It's bigger than the STEP program.
Hey, thank you.
Why don't we put a provision then that we have no more giveaway programs until we get our debt-to-equity ratio to 60%? That's been our bogey for a long time and we were almost there. And I promise you, if you add $800 million into your debt net worth, you'd probably be down to 60%.
It'll make the bill go down. If you didn't do the program, you wouldn't have the bill increased. But that's not necessarily would make your, your number go up to 70. You spend the money and then you get reimbursed. If you don't spend the money, it'll make the bill go down.
By your customers.
Yes, I know, sir. All of our money goes through our customers. Yes, all the money goes to the customers.
My money is going into your balance sheet and you're taking it out and giving it to these guys.
All the money goes into the balance sheet and into the financials.
You're not making sense. You're getting this money, you're thinking it's growing on a tree someplace and dropping in our balance sheet. It goes into the balance sheet because every one of us are paying it every month.
Okay.
Don't, don't do stupid stuff, Paula. We're not that dumb. Come on.
I am not trying to do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Gold Williams, Mr. Luna. Did we answer your question, Mr. Steen? Did we answer your question? Okay, we answered your question.
I just wanted to give our CEO an opportunity to respond.
Could you respond, get back to us on that?
I, that was, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
That was it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luna. Appreciate that presentation. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to item number five, optimized budget planning now and in the future. Ms. Gold Williams?
I'm going to allow Cory to come straight up to the, to the microphone. His presentation is ready to go.
Cory, we're running a little behind. If you could help us on that, we sure appreciate you. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Chair. Appreciate that. Thank you, Trustee. It's good to be here. So as alluded to at the beginning by Paula, you know, this was intended to really speak to how we look at optimizing our budget planning and looking at it now and how we can make opportunities in the future. As alluded to also at the beginning, we do have a supplemental item. At the time of preparation for this, we had not been able to identify spend within the, you know, zip code or district. We do have a view relative to our board quadrants and we think that's going to be very helpful for the board. So as I speak, I'll align my comments with that in mind. So as noted, I'll speak briefly to our current approach, talk about our new opportunities in terms of how we can look and prioritize spend. And the agenda aligns very much with those comments. In addition, I'll be acknowledging the follow-up we had had on several questions that have come up during the financial landscape conversation that we've had over the last several months. As always, especially in the context of a budget, we anchor into our guiding pillars. And of course, in terms of budgets, we anchor into the focus on financial responsibility. We've had a good discussion so far. Ensuring that our spend is in alignment with our pillars while at the same time managing our, our financials. Okay, on the next slide, slide five. As I alluded to, we've had a number of conversations relative to our financial landscape. As a quick refresher, there were a number of conversations over the last several months that ranged from how we're addressing, managing our customers' challenges that they're having, what we're doing to help, and then framing up what those financial challenges look like for us in the, going forward. And then we followed that conversation with, you know, what we are looking at from a financial sustainability approach. And part of that conversation was about how we've been reducing our expenses and costs over the last several years. But at the same time, it was about how we have included a provisional rate request, as Paula has mentioned a number of times, into our budgets. And that recovery of revenue will, will help us. We also talked about our budget proposal. We gave a preview last month. This is relevant, this context and setup, because later today you'll hear from Shannon Albert, who will give a similar presentation relative to our budget, specifically our capital and O&amp;M budgets for approval. Along that journey, that is where we have submitted in writing several comprehensive responses to the board relative to several questions. And we also had some additional dialogue that took place at the late June risk management meeting. Specific to one of those questions on the next slide, there was one request that was about where we're spending our dollars geographically around the city. So as alluded to, we don't currently track, our systems aren't set up to track in this manner. However, our teams have made some progress in identifying what that spend looks like relative to the quadrants, our board quadrants. So as a little bit of context on this next slide, slide seven, briefly touch on how we currently look and prioritize our expenditures. As you would expect, growth of our community is a key driver in how we prioritize spend. We have an obligation to serve and that's where we will be there for our community. The age of the infrastructure and the enabling technology, the performance of the grid, security, safety, regulatory requirements, and a lot of emergencies show up over the course of a year. A pole gets hit by a car, additional damage from storms. These are the things that we've continually looked at over the years that drive a lot of our spend that you'll hear about, you know, year after year in our budget. But as we mentioned, we do have a new opportunity going forward to dimensionalize our spend geographically across our city. Be influenced by a lot of extra things, you know, in terms of our improvements that we may make because of winter storm Uri, any type of emergency preparation, findings that, preparedness findings, and then anything else that comes up over time. On the next slide, it's a slide we've seen before, but this is really just a view of our city and indicating that during our winter storm Uri, the outages that we had faced were not disproportionately in one area or another. Specifically, there were disproportionately outages on the southern half of the city. But our focus is that regardless, we want to look at options to better track and spend our spend geographically and look at it through that equitable lens that we've discussed before. So again, appreciate that commentary and question from the board. The last thing I'll mention here is just kind of summing up. There are a number of different factors that we use to prioritize our spend as noted on the slide. They're in alignment with our pillars, ranging from reliability to environmental stewardship and so forth. The additional element that you see noted there is around an equity lens and we've spoken about that. So this is new for us. We're going to take a shot at dimensionalizing that in the supplemental information that I have. But we'll continue to update the board on our progress as we go forward with our budgets. So with that, and I know I went through that pretty quickly, Chair, but I wanted to direct your attention to the supplemental information that's been handed out. It'll be on our website following this board meeting, but it's titled supplemental fiscal '22 capital spend by quadrant preliminary view. Pardon? Yes, in the supplemental? Absolutely, yes. I'll be stepping through that. So this was identified as a preliminary regional view because that's really what it is. It's our first shot at trying to dimensionalize our spend. So a couple of things jump off this page. There's a lot on this. But broadly speaking, we can note that the investments that we have have aligned with the focus on growth and the areas needing reliability improvements. So on the left-hand side of this illustration is a picture of our service territory, broken out by the four quadrants that our board is divided into as we had spoken about. We specifically called out the fiscal '22 capital for the electric and gas transmission and distribution spend, which is a subset of the capital dollars that you'll hear from Shannon later in the presentation. That approximates about $450 million. And what you can see is the spend broken out by different quadrants, one and two being on the north side, three and four being on the southern. And we also pulled out the downtown area. What this slide shows you is that there is a slight additional spend in the northern quadrants of our city. But there are a couple of drivers for that and I think we want to make sure, again, for context and understanding what that looks like, we share those, those elements. The two key ones are going to be around customer growth and reliability. And one of the interesting stats that we had noted was that over the past three years, the north side has seen just a little over 70% of our new meter sets. That speaks to the type of growth that we have been discussing for a number of, number of board meetings. And that is where a number of our spend has been. The other big driver is around reliability. And specifically, we prioritize our investments relative to, you know, our poorest performing circuits and things of that nature. What we've also noted is that the north side contributed to about 70% of the duration, of the outage duration experienced, which is longer than some of the other areas. So a very early view, but we wanted to capture that, wanted to dimensionalize it so that we can have conversations going forward. The other thing I'll note on the following slide, on slide three, The other thing I'll note on the following slide, on slide three, is the remaining part of our capital budget. Our generation and our other operational areas approximate $260 million in spend for all of our service territory. And that spend is, you know, the benefit is shared by all the customers at the same time. And so, you know, with that, those are the types of investments around ensuring our generation assets continue to be maintained, any other replacement of that aging infrastructure, obviously, security and technology is a shared asset for all of our customers, and then, of course, customer experience and, you know, any regulatory or environmental items. So, sir, those are the two additional items, Chair, that I want to make reference to. I think they do provide some additional context. More to come. We'll share with the board what progress we make as we plan our future budgets. But the connect back is, as you hear our budget presentation later from Shannon, these dollars in totality make up the spend that we are currently in. So, okay, hope that's helpful.
Shannon Albert in item number 10 is going to further express all the other questions that we have.
Yes, yes, sir.
We just had a whole presentation and a major discussion right now. The other thing about all three, on the, oh yeah? Sorry.
We just had a major conversation right now, right, on STEP? Or I forget, all the names are all STEP something, but the point is, is that the, I don't see here, the focus on investment, it says ensures continued support of service territories, including reliability, replacement, security, improvement of customer experience, regulatory. Maybe could we add the word, you know, conservation? A good portion of that discussion was conservation, right? And even, I mean, obviously, in everything that we do, it's really about meeting customers' expectations. Like, do we need a whole line on improving customer when we really need to focus again on, I go back to the environment or the conservation component, right? The whole purpose of that program is, is on that.
Yeah.
So just, just consider that, please, because I think that it does a disservice. And again, I go back to quantifying where we make our investments. And so, we may disagree, but maybe if it really is that focus and we can quantify it, then we can justify why we do what we do versus just not leaving it, not including it in this last.
Let me help and see if I can dimensionalize this a little.
Yeah, and I think, again, I mean, everything we do is about the user experience, right?
Right.
Whether it's reliability, affordability, protecting them, empowering them. I don't think it needs its own bullet, but I do think the conservation component, especially with what we're facing with climate pressures, et cetera, would be a good focus for us, just to include as a pillar. Well, not a pillar, but a main driver consideration.
I think that what would be helpful is, this is our capital budget. So the conversation that preceded mine was around the STEP, and that is a different bucket of money. So those dollars.
It is still a bucket of money.
It's a bucket of money, absolutely. And I think we can help dimensionalize that and show the distinction, perhaps, between those dollars.
Somehow, yeah, somehow, yeah, just somehow incorporate it. I don't know how to frame it, but just consider it, because it is about our budget regardless.
Right.
Conservation, whether it's our program or not, is part of the budget.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you, Cory, for excellent presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Gudzinski, so what you're talking about really, for somebody just trying to understand this, is that we spend money where there's, where the growth is going, right?
Yes, sir.
I think you had that stat that location of meter sets over the past three years, north side 73%, south side 27%.
Absolutely.
So when we're making these decisions, it's really responding to something that we have no control over, right? Which is where people, where new communities are rising and people are moving.
In the context of growth, yes. We've said before, our obligation to serve our customers. So yes, we will direct spend for those areas that we need to connect and set up.
And you say the two main drivers are customer growth and then, and then that surprises me, but you're saying that the north side contributed to 70% of the outage duration?
Yes, that's correct.
Outages that are three to five times longer than other areas. So you're addressing that, too?
Yes, sir.
Why is that, by the way?
Well, probably a question for Paul Barn, but he and I talked outside. And he's mentioned before, and I remember him speaking publicly about this, the design of the circuits were longer, and so they've had poorer reliability relative to that. So anything deeper, I'd probably defer to Paul and the operations team around that question, but that does stand out as a question I had asked him as well.
I'll just add again that the design of the system was organic. So we don't, we don't go to the city and say where all the circuits are going to be. We are following developers, where they're putting it. And we've tried a lot of things. We've tried underground, burial, direct, what we call direct bury. That hasn't, that wasn't the easiest thing, but in the north, it has a lot of direct bury. When you do that, a lot of people want their lines underground, but when you do direct bury, there's a lot of seismic shift. In San Antonio, you wouldn't think that. But we've had a lot of breakage in the line for direct buries. And then we did do some areas that have, as Cory said, very long lines. And the longer your line is, the more you can efficiently get the line in, but you have a longer area for, there to be a problem. And so when you have that, you really want, we think if we had to redesign it, we'd want more nodes than long lines with a bunch of people attached. And so the north has a lot of that architecture on it, and that's why we're seeing that problem. We saw it during Yuri magnified.
And I'll close with this, but maybe that is the opportunity. Maybe so much, I mean, obviously, developers are developers, but instead of it being an organic process, why don't we spend some more time in it being a deliberate design? And if we know there's a lack of economic development in certain districts or spending, if we're more deliberate about what we want to build and who do we want to attract, why not do that? You know, it's one thing to just grow organically, but not to plan for smart design, smart cities. I mean, we talk about it all the time, but just looking at this landscape, we're not doing a good job of that. So we can't just build, I mean, obviously, there's a demand. You've got to meet the demand. But if you do nothing to counteract and not strategically plan in other areas, then you get what you get when you look at this map. So how much do we want to continue to contribute to the inequities of how we're investing in our community? That's part of our budget, our budget planning process.
Great point. So we will, we do have some conversations with developers, and so we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Cory? If not, thank you, Cory. At this time.
Thank you.
We'll have caring for our customers. Ms. Cole Williams?
Yes, sir. I'm going to have Deanna Hardwick, who heads up our customer success area, Vice President, and she's going to understand that she's under pressure, and she'll go as fast as she can.
Good afternoon, Board. So good afternoon. Today, I'm here, I'm going to talk about the care and support that we plan to continue as we look to resume our standard business practices, and that's the normal collection activities, including how we're planning on resuming disconnections. So first, I want to talk about how we're going to continue to make sure customers know all of the different support options that we have out there to support them. And then also how our plan is to transition back to those normal operations, doing everything that we can to connect our customers with solutions and ultimately minimize the number of disconnections that we see in our community. So as I mentioned, we'll talk about the different support options you've seen before, how we've monitored the landscape, specifically talking about the, how we've connected customers and continued to make sure that we have the right assistance options out there for customers. We'll also talk about the financial impacts of the suspended disconnects that we've seen. And then I'll finish with the messaging sequencing and what our overall goals are as we move through this process. And as always, we put everything through our guiding pillars, and we'll start with, and today, focus on the customer affordability while maintaining financial responsibility. So to start with, we'll talk about the support options. You see up here, a lot of the same options that you've seen before, but we really just wanted to emphasize that it's been important for us to identify the right resources for our customers, whether it's support options that we have here at CPS Energy or working with our partners at the City of San Antonio and Bear County, to make sure that we identify the right federal funds to help those customers who need it the most. And so far, we've been able to identify almost $30 million in assistance to connect customers with in order to avoid and keep their accounts current. And as I mentioned, we've been monitoring the landscape, and this is another slide that you've seen before. We continue to analyze what external factors are out there. But for here, we really just wanted to focus on the fact that there are a lot of assistance options that are out there in the community. And we've been making sure through community engagement and with our key account partners that we are looking through what options are out there, not just to help with a customer's power bill, but also rental assistance and their water bills. And again, our goal is to make sure that we're providing as much support because we know that there's a broad need out in our community to recover financially. From a financial standpoint, you can see that we've broken out what our accounts receivables look like here between our residential and critical customers. We have over 83,000 customers that are greater than 30 days past due, and over 70,000 customers that are currently eligible for disconnect. On the commercial side, we have over 8,000 customers that are past due greater than 30 days, and we have over 4,000 customers that are eligible for disconnect. And we wanted to be able to show what this would look like to the average customer. So here on this slide, you can see the trends that we've been seeing in terms of the amount that's past due, as well as the age of the accounts receivables. And for the average customer that has an account that's past due, it's over 200 days past due with over $600 that's due. And we know that that's a significant amount for anybody to have to figure out how to come up with. So that's where our messaging and our outreach is going to be so important. And it really has continued to be important in everything that we've done. So our first goal is to make sure that we are creating awareness with, of timing. But really, our main focus is on the assistance options and programs that are available out to connect our customers with, whether it be our programs or in partnership with, with the city or the county, to identify the right federal funding. We're going to, we're going to continue our community outreach, make sure that we're partnering with our stakeholders out in the community, make sure that we're continuing with those core outbound calls to connect customers each individually with the right solution to fit their needs. We're going to use all communication channels that we have available to us. That's messaging on the bill, media outreach, social media outreach, as well as the direct phone calls that we're making and sending letters directly to customers. And all of that with a direct communication that has a call to action, as well as how to reach us and connect with us. You know, we really just want customers to know that their account does not have to be disconnected. All they have to do is find a way to connect with us, either calling us or coming to see us, however works for them. We will find a solution to fit their needs. All they have to do is connect with us. So with that in mind, we're going to talk about the sequencing and planning. We're going to continue our heightened engagement and communication with our customers through the summer. And then our plan is, starting September 1st, to resume and activate disconnects for the large and commercial customers on, for the 216 large and commercial customers, September 1st, and then provide some additional time for our small and medium businesses, and they would begin activating disconnections for those accounts on October 1st. For our residential customers, we know that there's a large customer count or a large customer amount that's out there, part of the vulnerable population that needs additional time to get caught up on their accounts. And we want to make sure we're providing them as much time that they need so that they can connect with us, find the right program that we have, as well as so they can find a way to get connected with the federal funds through the City of San Antonio, as well as with Bear County. So we're recommending those customers that are part of the vulnerable population to be sequenced in at the very end. So what we're looking at doing is, starting on October 1st, is to activate disconnections for customers who aren't enrolled in any of our assistance programs, haven't made any type of payment in 12 months or more, and also haven't made any type of response to our outreach. For these customers, we hope that when they get their letter that says that they're eligible for disconnection, that they'll reach out to us and give us an opportunity to find a way and a solution so their account isn't disconnected. Then on November 1st, our plan is to activate disconnections for customers that aren't enrolled in any type of assistance programs. And then finally, for those customers who are enrolled in assistance programs, beginning in January, so after the holidays, we would resume and activate disconnects. Again, for these customers, our goal is to give them as much time as we possibly can so that they can find all the different solutions that are available to them, and we can help connect them as much as we can to any of the federal funds that might be out there for them. Again, through this process, our goal is to be as thoughtful and caring as we can so that we can help customers recover. And we know that their recovery helps us as a community recover. So that's why it's going to be very important for us to stay connected with the City of San Antonio, Bear County, find all federal funds that are available, and make sure that we're connecting customers as much as we can with solutions so that we can minimize the disconnections in our community. And that's all I have. If I have, I'll take any questions?
Yes, do we have any questions or comments for the board?
Thank you, Chairman, and Deanna, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the work to identify communication strategy and also to align with SAWs, which is also taking a somewhat similar, or actually the same kind of timeline approach to customers. Has there been any work to correlate customer base with SAWs in terms of data? Because I would imagine that largely the households that are under stress for CPS are also households under stress for mortgage, rent, and water as well. And there could be some combined messaging from the city as well, if that were the case.
We have continued to meet with the city staff, as well as SAWs, to share resources that we have available. We are limited in what customer information that we can share due to privacy concerns, but we continue to work through what type of aggregated data that we can see to generally target the right section, the different sections of the city.
Okay. So the communication strategy has really started already.
Yes, sir.
And I believe you even started that a little bit last month. Has there been any indication of response from customers? Are you, are you seeing that affect the balance? Are you hearing responses from customers? What's been, what has been the response so far?
Thank you for that. So back in March, whenever I got to come in front of you as the board, we did have over 83,000 customers that were eligible for disconnection. At this time, I believe it's over, we're down to about 74,000 customers that's eligible for disconnection. So each month since March, we have seen the number of customers eligible for disconnect come down. We are seeing more customers. We opened up our walk-in centers, increased our hours. We're seeing more customers in our walk-in centers, and we're, we are having more customers contact us to see what we can do to help them.
Okay. Well, that's promising. And again, I think it's worth the effort. So any way that the utilities can collaborate and also assistance with the city, because I'm sure that a lot of those households we're already in touch with for other reasons. Last thing I'll ask is, there's been considerable work to identify sources of revenue to help with this. So we've even discussed potential use of ARPA dollars with the city as well. So can you give us an update on, on those discussions? I don't know if that's you or Paula, Deanna, on identifying sources of revenue to help with the balance?
Eric, Robert, and I have been talking about this, and we've also had our external relations people, team members, try to collaborate to make that work. So we're in the process, but we haven't, we haven't cracked the, not yet, but yes, sir, we were having conversations.
Okay. Well, again, we're having the same discussion over at the water utility, so continue to stay coordinated with them. Obviously, awareness building is a first step, and it seems like it's, it's bearing some fruit, but it's going to be a difficult few months for us to work through this. So thank you very much for the presentation, Deanna.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I do have a, if I'm mistaken, maybe, but the majority of our revenue right now is from small and large organizations, right? Private sector. Whenever we're presented data, most of our revenue is from private organizations, right?
From, from commercial.
Yeah, commercial businesses. Lots of small. Yeah, we're going to start with them first. And here's just, again, this is just my small business experience. We have a lot of programs. It's that gap that really concerns me. None of the programs at a national level, federal level, even local level, sometimes support those that are under a million, small business, you know? And it's like the programs already exist, like we keep, we keep spending money on the same population, right? And I hate to sound like that. It's not like I don't have any compassion. Is there anything innovative that we're doing for those individuals that are not extremely below the poverty level or small business organizations that aren't under a million dollars, you know? And there are the bigs who usually have been sentenced in place that they get bailouts all the time. We just saw one recently, again. You know, do we have any core data in those businesses that have been in business 27 years, 25 years, all of a sudden have a $5,000 balance, and they don't qualify for a city program or a county program, and they're not going to get a bailout? What are we doing for them other than the angels program?
The biggest thing that we have for our.
Besides payment plans.
Really, that's what we have to offer, is payment plans for customers, right? So we continue to work with them, and, you know, our payment plans are pretty, pretty flexible. So if it's.
You know, and I think where I would like to challenge ourselves is how do we focus on that group? Who typically, if you look at the economic development data, those are really your loyal companies and are one of the biggest contributors to the, again, you know, to the budget. I mean, we're going to lose a company that's been around, let's say, 27 years, 25 years, 15 years, over $5,000, who's contributed sales tax, county taxes, paying our bills, and then there's no relief for any of those individuals. And now, again, I don't have the data, but I'm assuming there's a good portion of that. So I understand we're going to start with them first, but I'm just curious about if that's really the best way to. I mean, there's no easy way to slice the pie here, right? But there's just so much more programs for individuals that, you know, are going to get the most of the funding anyways. So I kind of go back to, how do we get creative here? Because, I mean, I would hate to, again, start with smaller organizations that have been around in business for a long time, doing all the right things, and it took one incident to wipe everything out.
I totally hear you. I think, just additional context, we are actually starting with the big, the big companies, not the small. And by far, if we can just talk to every single, even small business, and that's why we're tearing, because we can't, we can't work those out with everyone all at one time. So we're going to try to be as flexible as we can with the small businesses, but we'll hit the large commercial first. We just don't have a lot of resource. Mayor, to your point, the more help we can get, the more help we can direct. But there is no revenue stream for us, and we've been holding on since March. It's a very valid point, but we will work with the small businesses, ma'am.
I think we don't rush over the fact that we offer them payment plans. And I think that's significant. In other words, you're not saying pay it immediately or we'll disconnect. We try to work with them. And most businesses, Ms. Gonzalez, you have a successful business, but if you're offered a payment plan, you can work through.
Just maybe getting behind on electricity. You might be getting behind on payroll. You might be getting behind, everything's going up. So with everything going up, I mean, you may get behind on your rent. You may, I don't know if you knew this, but the PPP loan after a while didn't reimburse you for certain things after they said they would. So now, you know, you're dealing with things that you thought were covered under the PPP loan. Now they're not. So, I mean, I don't think it's as easy as I just got behind on my utility bill. I got behind on my water bill. I got behind on property taxes. I got behind on all sorts of stuff. Very few small businesses, even though it's not our responsibility, have a safety net, a line of credit, have the financial capacity to withstand a 15 months of delay of how you do business.
You're exactly right.
This is not about, I got, you know, we are-- I mean, this was a unique situation, an extreme situation, that most people cannot survive. So even though, again, it's not social welfare, I get that. We got, the reality is that most of the programs don't support a good core of what San Antonio has made up, which is above mom and pop organizations, and not all the HEBs of the world, and the Valeros, and the big companies. You got a good portion, a good portion. It's really making between, you know, above 1 million to 5. Those are the ones that I sometimes wonder about. There's really not much.
So if I might, this is why I think our message out right now needs to be, contact CPS, contact SAWs, contact the city. A number of these programs are dynamic. We don't even know, for instance, the final language on ARPA yet. So what I would suggest is if a business, similar to what you're describing, is finding itself in arrears, they need to contact CPS so that there is a schedule of some kind created so that they're not on the disconnect list. That's the first step. And then as we identify new areas of revenue and flexibility in which assistance can be made available, whether it's a residential customer or a commercial customer, we're going to work with them. The entire community wants to make sure that those businesses are able to get through this and weather the storm, just as we would any of our residents as well.
I think we, y'all are doing a great job in trying to work with them. I know that every other company, I don't care if it's HEB and all these other places, then if they raise Foot Locker's, or Home Depot, or Costco's, all of this during this pandemic, they've raised prices and people are still there. Those parking lots are full, and they're buying. I think we're doing a great job, but we have a business too here to make sure that these doors stay open. And we provide the electricity and the power to these homes that we just can't keep putting this off. We're just, we're going to have to move forward with this and do the best we can. And I agree with the mayor. These people have to contact us and let us know what kind of payment plan it's going to be on. If they don't contact us, then we're going to have to proceed. Because we can't wait. I read that on SAWs, they started in October. We have to begin this too, because we look at our debt ratio, and we're going to build up debt we can't afford to pay. And we got to make sure that we keep these, the power on here too. So keep doing a great job. You're doing a great job. Wonderful. Keep doing it, and keep helping us to push to help people. But then again, I like to see, like the mayor said, people got to help themselves, and they got to call in and get on the payment scale, payment schedule. It's not for us to call them and put them on. They have to do it themselves. Because if they're not taking that initiative, then it's nothing we can do for them. So at this time, I would like for Ms. Shanna, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like for Ms. Ramirez to take us into executive session.
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into an executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, prospective gifts or donations under Section 551.073, personnel matters under Section 551.074, security personnel or devices under Section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, to deliberate under Texas Government Code, Section 418.183 Subsection F about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act, economic development negotiations under Section 551.076, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It is 2:38 right now, and we're breaking for executive session.
Ms. Ramirez, would you please bring us back to session, please?
Yes, sir. It is 4:06 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum. All trustees are present.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. At this time, we have a consent agenda, approval of consent agenda minutes of the special meeting as the risk committee management committee held on 6/22/2021, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 6/28/2021, payments to the city of San Antonio for June 2021, procurement item professional services, financial audit service, and... Yes, that will be the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Mr. Kelly moved. Do I have a second?
Second by trustee Gonzalez.
Second by trustee Gonzalez. All in favor? Do we have any question or comments first?
A little bit. What are we approving on D1 professional services, financial audit services?
Will you go ahead?
Paula, did you want to clarify or did you want me to? Corey can come up. He's quick.
I was just about to jump in.
Just clarify for the record what we're approving on the financial services audit.
Absolutely, yeah. This is for our new contract for external auditors that will be coming in to do work for the next four years with an option to extend for a fifth year. As you know, Baker Tilly is our current auditor. KPMG was selected, and so this contract is for them. And as a part of that work, we heard your ask of getting a quote for potential integrated audit around controls, and that is included in the quote that you see there as well for work. And we'll actually elaborate on that topic at the audit and finance committee meeting in a couple of days as well.
This would lock...
For four years with an option to renew it on the fifth year.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we had a motion by trustee Kelly, second by vice chair Gonzalez. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a committee report, master planning oversight committee meeting held on 6/28/2021, personnel committee meeting held on 7/8/2021, nomination committee meeting held on 7/9/2021. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you.
Can you cut your mic off, sir?
Is that the...
Thank you.
What I would recommend is that the MPAC and the personnel committee meeting minutes are in the packet and are readily reviewable. I would like to go ahead and go over the minutes from the nominating committee if you agree because I think those are a bit more impactful today. So if you'll give me a moment, let me go over those. That meeting, I'm sorry. That meeting was held on July the 9th at 10:30 AM. It was attended by myself as chair and Dr. Willis Mackey as the other board member along with our chief legal counsel, Ms. Shannon Ramirez. The reason I wanted to review this is because it does have some very much immediate impact over the next several months. So let me go through... very much immediate impact over the next several months. So let me go through that. The board members searched website and application. The committee discussed the need to search for a new board member who will fill the upcoming seat to be vacated by Mr. Kelly upon the end of his term, January thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Qualifications were reviewed, including that eligible applicants must be United States citizens, residents of Bear County, reside in the Northwest Quadrant number one of CPS Energy Service Area, and should be current on their CPS Energy customer bill. The board's relation team was delighted to announce that the Board of Trustees' application is now available online for the convenience of all interested parties, and members of the nomination team were pointed to the location of the applicant on our website. For those who prefer paper copies, they are also available at our service centers and main office. Mr. Kelly and Dr. Mackey gave approval for the application to go live today. The application deadline is five PM on Tuesday, August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, and that's a very important date. To find my quadrant tool was demonstrated for attendees at the meeting. The tool which can be found on our website should be used before applying to confirm that applicants reside in the Northwest Quadrant number one. Communication and marketing plan. The committee reviewed and approved the communication and application plan. Mr. Kelly and Dr. Mackey asked the team to move forward with a robust plan that will promote the vacancy with a multi-layered grassroots approach, utilizing engagement opportunities with partners, our owned communication channels, media outreach, print advertisement, and targeted digital advertising. The first step in this process was a press release that went out today, which highlighted the requirements to be a trustee as well as other helpful information. Action items are seen to be assigned to the board relations team, including setting up future nominations committee meeting during the duration of the search, finding dates in October two oh two-one for special board meeting to discuss applicants, organizing a board information center to be held in August, and enabling information about the search, including the link to the Find Me Quadrant two for all of the trustees. There being no further business to come before the committee upon a motion duly made by Mr. Kelly and seconded by Dr. Mackey, the meeting was unanimously adjourned at eleven AM. So I just wanted to make sure that there is a wide dissemination of the information concerning the fact that the applicants must be received only before August thirty-one, two oh two-one, and that we are reaching out to the community in every way possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Does the board have any questions or comments? If not, we'll move on to item, agenda item number ten, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, financial plan, part five, update budget proposal by Ms. Shannon Albert. And this is a voting item.
Good afternoon, Chair Dr. Mackey and trustees. Today, I appreciate the opportunity to present our fiscal twenty-two financial plan, part five, our updated budget proposal. As you know, in May, I came and presented a preview of this budget proposal, and today we're respectfully requesting approval. So our disclaimer, objectives and takeaways, I'd like to briefly cover our financial landscape and talk a little bit about our financial sustainability approach, then jump into the financial budget projections for fiscal twenty-two and twenty-three, and then, as I mentioned, respectfully request approval of the fiscal twenty-two non-fuel O and M and capital budgets. Agenda is in alignment with our key takeaways and objectives, so I'll move on to the next slide. Our financial landscape update. So this really outlines the conversations that we've had over the last several months related to our fiscal twenty-two financial plan. In April, we talked about continuing to help our customers, what we were doing from a bill payment assistance, pay arrangements, waiving late fees, and again, the continuation of suspension of disconnects. And then we also talked about our financial landscape and those challenges. Then in May, we came back to the board, talked a little bit about financial sustainability approach. Corey Kachinsky talked about the impacts to our operations and maintaining and supporting customer growth, as well as the impacts of COVID and Storm Uri. And I also provided a preview of our budget proposal at that meeting. And so today, we're here bringing that budget request back to the board for approval. This is a slide you've seen in our fiscal twenty-two financial plan presentations. I think what we were trying to do here is really look at our overall financial landscape and really categorize it. We've got the first category, maintaining operations and supporting growth. This is what I consider kind of the foundational elements of our business, maintaining operations, supporting the growth in the community, and looking at our overall business model. When you look at the pandemic and winter storm Uri, more event-driven categories. But when we looked, when we talk about the pandemic impacts, really looking at the cost of our bad debt expenses, the write-offs of our customer receivables, what's happening in our aging of our accounts receivable, and then the winter storm Uri impacts, really those high fuel and power costs that we incurred in the winter, many of those still being disputed. But what are those overall impacts? And Corey, Corey had, Corey Kachinsky presented those impacts and talked about the provisional rate increase that we were including in the fiscal twenty-two financial plan. So this is a slide you've also seen, looking at our financial sustainability approach. I wanted to include it in this presentation, really to anchor on those first two bullets. First, our focus to continue to control cost. Our last rate increase was in twenty fourteen. We continue to provide, we have a, what I would consider a proven track record to show that we're, we're cost, we're controlling cost and have a good, strong cost management program. We shared with the board six hundred and four million dollars of savings in the last, in the last three years. That has helped us to defer a potential rate increase. We've included the provisional rate increase, and as we talk about the, the financial impacts and look at our metrics, we felt it appropriate to include it as a placeholder in this financial plan. But again, it is a placeholder. It would, any type of rate increase would be subject to approval by the board, as well as our city council. The provisional rate increase, we've, we are estimating that effective in the fall of twenty twenty-one in this financial plan. So now we get into the, what I consider more of the meat of the budget presentation. So this particular slide just looks at our budget components and the overall governance for each of those budget components. And today, we're discussing the non-fuel O and M and the capital budgets, which are approved by the board annually. The other components, again, have other governance structures that, that really, that impact them. So we'll talk, we're going to focus on non-fuel O and M and capital today. This slide, while we're looking at non-fuel O and M, this gives you the full picture of our annual funding requirements. So when you look at our overall annual funding requirements, we're looking at two point seven billion dollars. So it's significant funding requirements. The light blue component of the pie chart is, is the non-fuel O and M, which is what we're discussing today. And as you look over to the right, the lower right-hand corner of this slide, you'll see it lays out the non-fuel O and M component at six hundred eighty-seven point five million, and the capital request at seven hundred and four, seven hundred and fourteen point three million. The other components, as noted, again, fall under other governance, governance and policies, as I mentioned on the previous slide. So this is looking at, a little bit different look at our overall revenue requirements. So the left hand, the, the bar on the left-hand side is our sources of revenue, and the bar on the right hand is our uses of revenue. Few things to anchor on, on our sources of revenue. The, the blue component, which represents our retail electric revenue, it's over eighty-five percent of our overall revenue, sources of revenue. So it's a significant component of our overall sources of revenue. And the other thing I would point out is you notice that our uses of revenue equal our sources of revenue, and that's laid out in our flow of funds and our bond ordinance. What that really tells us is that we are a cost recovery business. So what are, whatever revenues we have coming in, that's what we have to spend. A different look, we'll, we'll get into some more detail into the sources of revenue. So this has all of our sources of revenue, our retail electric, our distribution gas, our wholesale, and then our non-operating. I want to familiarize you with the layout of these slides, because we'll see them in the next, we'll see several similar layouts in the next few slides. The first three bars represent historical data. Then you have fiscal twenty-two, which is our proposed, and then fiscal twenty-three, which is projected. As I mentioned, the retail electric, you see that as a significant portion, and you see slight increases, a slight growth in, in the retail electric revenue. You do see the retail electric revenue bump up in twenty twenty-three, and that's a result of the provisional rate increase being effective for a full year. You'll also see similar pattern with distribution gas. The one thing I would point out on our wholesale electric is a little different story. If you look at fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty, you can see we had significant years in wholesale revenues. You see fiscal twenty-one, we have, has, the, our revenues have weakened, primarily because we had fewer market opportunities, and we expect to continue to see that in fiscal twenty-two and, and, and see that tick up a bit in twenty-three. Our non-operating revenues include our interest income, as well as property sales, so they vary from, from year to year. And, and there are other sources of non-operating revenue in there as well, but those are the primary, primary drivers. And then we move into looking at our uses of revenue. Again, very similar layout. You have the three years of historical, the proposed, and the projected. I'll talk more about the operating expenses as we get into the next several slides. I want to really focus on this particular slide on a couple of key things. The debt requirements. So that's our debt service requirements. And as you see, and you look at the historical numbers, you'll see in fiscal twenty and twenty-one, we had lower debt service requirements. And so what was driving that? Well, we were able to defees or pay down some debt, and so we were able to lower those overall debt service requirements in those years. But you do see that it picks back up in twenty-two and twenty-three. The other item I would point out is city payment. So as you look at city payment, you see fiscal twenty-one, we were at three hundred and thirty, thirty-one million, if I round up. Again, much lower than the previous two years. Really, that was driven by a lower overall revenues. And again, impacts of the pandemic had, had impact there. As you move to fiscal twenty-two, you can see the city payment is almost back to that one million dollars a year. So it is improving, and you see a, a bigger improvement in fiscal twenty-three. As you look, this is probably the last, the last thing I want to point out, is the repair and replacement remaining contribution. So that repair and replacement account helps us fund our capital program. So it is our cash funding for capital. And as you look across that table, and you look at fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty, you can see we had significant contributions to the repair and replacement. That remaining contribution was a fairly large contribution. You see that it's dropped in twenty, it dropped in twenty-one, again, as a result of overall lower revenues, and it dropped in, in twenty-two. It's significantly lower in twenty-two. You do see it pick back up in twenty-three, and what's driving that is the full year of the provisional rate increase. Again, understanding how, how these, how that impacts our overall metrics and our debt to, to cash funding is very important. So that's one of the reasons that provisional rate increase is included in this proposal. So moving on to our operating expenses, we'll focus on that top line item, which is our non-fuel O and M. And again, that's six hundred and eighty-seven point five million dollars. It's about a five percent increase, and the driver there is an additional, additional refueling at STP, and that happens about every three years. And we've, we've included a couple of additional slides based on board feedback to provide a little bit more detail into the spend. And so this slide shows our non-fuel O and M by business unit. So you can see the power sustainability, which includes STP. That additional STP refueling is included there. I would also point out our shared services and administrative costs. You can see those O and M, O and M costs are increasing. Driving that is cybersecurity resilience and other emergent-type business costs related to weather events and pandemic, as well as our market volatility for our benefit plans. And I, and also you see a slight tick up in business technology and excellence, again, drivers, again, technology modernization. So you'll see, you see an increase there. Moving on to capital. So our capital plan is seven hundred and fourteen point three million dollars for fiscal twenty-two, and that's about a thirteen percent increase. We'll, we'll move to this next slide, and I'll talk a little bit more about what's driving that. So again, a little bit more detail on the, on the overall capital spend. This is by strategic category. So we have growth, we have our infrastructure modernization, civic projects and other. And as you look at this, we've got an increase of about forty-five million dollars in infrastructure modernization, about a thirteen million dollar increase on our civic projects. And then when you look at other, other includes a lot of our compliance projects as well, and so we're seeing about a twenty-two million dollar increase in, in those projects. So I've talked a little bit about funding of our, of our capital plan, but this is really looking at the historical and, and again, the proposed and projected. And as I mentioned, we fund with both debt and cash, and we typically like to target about a fifty-fifty split of, of debt versus cash funding for the capital program. As, as we mentioned, those contributions to the R and R account have a, have an impact on our ability to, to, to cash fund. And so as you look at fiscal nineteen and you look at fiscal twenty, you can see we've, we've funded in, in nineteen, we funded, you know, we funded fifty-seven percent with debt, but you see in fiscal twenty, we were able to fund more with cash. Fiscal twenty-one, we hit about that fifty-fifty target that we're, we're shooting for, but we're projecting for fiscal twenty-two to fund more with debt. Again, what drives that is that, that additional contribution to the R and R. So what we're able to put into the savings to cash fund our capital program. And you'll see in fiscal twenty-three, that debt funding number is coming down, and we're, we're funding more with cash. And what is, what's creating that is that additional, that provisional rate increase for the full year. So we always look at our metrics as, as part of our overall financial planning, and this particular slide shows our fiscal twenty-two and fiscal twenty-three metrics, and our minimum thresholds are to the left of the gold outlined fiscal, fiscal twenty-two numbers. And you can see our adjusted debt service coverage and our days cash on hand are above our minimum threshold. Our debt to equity, again, continues to be challenged. We're at sixty-five percent. And we're also projecting a net loss for fiscal twenty-two at thirty-four point four million. And you'll see the remaining R and R contribution is sixty-nine point four million. But you do see an improvement in fiscal twenty-three, and what's driving that, again, is that additional, that provisional rate increase. So you'll see our adjusted debt service coverage improves, our debt to equity is starting to trend in the right direction, we're reporting a, a net income, and a much healthier contribution to the remaining R and R account. So as we talk about next steps, our, we'll continue to monitor our fiscal twenty-two financial performance and provide updates to the board monthly. We'll also be bringing our fiscal twenty-two financing transactions in an upcoming meeting. And then I can, I think continued discussions and, and focus and due diligence on the financial sustainability approach. So what we've said is, we place this provisional rate increase in this plan. There are a lot of unknowns and uncertainty. We want to move through our summer months and also see, as we begin lifting the suspension of disconnects, what happens with our receivable balances. We'll have more certainty on litigation. We'll have more certainty on litigation efforts. And I think we can refresh our proposal and bring that back to the board in the fall. So here, we are not requesting a rate increase. We are just requesting approval of our non-fuel O and M in our capital. We've made a commitment that we will refresh and fine-tune that request for rate support and bring that back to the board when needed.
I do have a question, and maybe Paula, you can help me with this. We talked about disconnects today. Have we already included in the disconnect or in our budget the fuel adjustment charge? Have we already included that?
The possibility that we won't get paid by customers, is that what you're asking?
No, no, weren't we, during winter storm, right, we bought a lot of, obviously, we have a debt, right? How have we decided that debt's going to be passed on to our customers if we don't get a rate increase? Have we already calculated in our operating budget and our budget in general, the fuel adjustment charge?
For the storm?
Right.
So we haven't converted that money to debt yet, and Shannon can...
Right, I want to...
That's absolutely correct, right now.
The reason why I'm asking that question is because you're asking us to support a budget, and that has not been calculated. So I would like to know, when do we plan to include that? How do we plan to, what is the plan moving forward and how we plan to pass that cost on? I want a scenario of whether we get a rate increase or not, how that looks. This assumes a rate increase, and this does not assume, if I'm not mistaken, we haven't accounted for that as well.
Well, we have accounted, so this does account for...
Not debt.
Not the debt.
Not the debt component, but it does, it does account for the cost, the initial cost that we've incurred. We just have not issued debt on that.
It's pushing through O and M.
Right.
And so...
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, so it's pushing through that, how we finance it so we don't use all of our cash.
Right.
That's on the other side that we haven't. We're just holding the liability that ultimately we're going to need to convert to debt of some type, depending on whatever that ending balance is. We're going to look at the end of the summer, and we should have a pretty good idea by the time we get to September. And that'll shape how we bring forward what that financing needs to look like to at least get us through the overall immediate impact from the storm.
So part of what Cory also provided was this supplemental thing about equity.
Yes, ma'am.
So when I look at what was outlined as priorities of consideration was again, the reliability, the security component, regulatory, environmental compliance, and then again, we have agent infrastructure. So when I look at 61 and I look at 3, how much of that is, is this a reflection of that?
So that is a different slice of this capital program.
Right, this would be capital and this is...
So that is, it is same numbers, but again, it's a different look. I think our system, we are challenged in process and system and our ability to pull data by zip code. But we were able to do some backend and manual work to get something that has a better look, that is able to at least provide some geographic representation. Our commitment is to, again, look...
I understand that, I was just, again, I'm looking at...
It's just, it is a different slice of it. So it is, it is the capital side.
We're being asked to support something, and I'm not quite sure if it's, the investments are prioritized in what we're being asked to do by city council or mayor and...
Yes, ma'am.
Our business plan.
Okay, Ms. Steen?
So Ms. Go Williams, we have people listening in, and it's a source of confusion about our fiscal year. I think it might be well for you to explain that. But we're approving these items for a year we're already well into. We're halfway through the year, is that right, with the fiscal year ending January 31st? So maybe you could speak to that, like, I know there are reasons why we're approving it this late, but maybe people would like to know that. And then your thoughts on approving a budget, where we're basically approving a net loss? What are your thoughts on that?
So primarily relative to why it's taken this long is several things. We by far wanted, we'd like to have this through the board in the January meeting, no later than the February meeting and transition.
You know, I understand these reasons, but I think people listening might want to know.
So in our fiscal year, actually, to the point you raised, goes through January 31st. That's a decision made a long time ago. Yeah, you know, all we can surmise is that when you have a calendar-ending entity, there's a lot of pressure for audits. So I think there was just some request to be in a fiscal year, and we picked January 31st. There are some companies that are June, some, I think the city is through September. Ours has historically always been January 31st.
It's really strange, isn't it?
I don't think I've seen anything like it.
Being, doing the accounting all your life, but to have a fiscal year, and this is fiscal year 2022 that we're talking about.
Right.
We're already halfway through it.
Right. We would have normally, again, come forward, but we, a couple of things. Yes, last year was very, very difficult. It was very hard to forecast where we were going to come out. So COVID put a lot of pressure where the budget we really started with in the fall, we needed to update because a lot of people at the time were forecasting that we would end out of the pandemic much sooner. But it actually, as we all know, it's lingering much longer. And we're actually still dealing with how do we get back to a new normal? And what do we do with disconnects? So the team on the Financial Services side have done multiple variations trying to give the most updated information. Now that said, of course, what happened in February is Storm Yuri popped up on the scene, not anticipated in the budget process. So the team had to start all over again to try to estimate what to do and what were our options associated with Storm Yuri. So we've just had to take as much information as we could create, and we've done multiple versions. Now, at the same time, we've come to the board over the last several months and talked to you about the complexity of trying to do a forecast with so many things unknown and trying to answer those questions. So here we are now, middle of the year, asking for, it's close to the same thing we presented in, I think, the April timeframe. But of course, we wanted to give the board more time. It does have something very unusual in it that no other plan has had, which is the provisional rate increase in it. Now, the provisional rate increase is a symbol of a couple of things. Again, we have tried every single year for the last, really, 11 years to do all we can never to have a rate increase for the community unless we absolutely needed one. And we've only needed one in seven years. But all of that really had put us in a way that we knew ultimately, we know we actually ultimately have to have a rate increase, but we have tried our best, and it's been very successful. The board has asked us to wherever we can save money, be cost-conscious, those kind of things. However, in 2020, when you have the impact of trying to conserve costs, and then you have a pandemic, and then you have pressures where customers are not fully paying, I think one in every five customers is having a challenge pain, what you're seeing is that pressure from the community, that pressure of trying to wait. At the same time, cost escalation is happening. You're seeing that now we clearly have a gap that we can't fix without considering a rate increase. Now, to Shannon's point, we're not telling you we know exactly what it is because we still fight every single day to save costs. But we do need to get a budget approved and keep you updated, and then separate the fact of actually asking for a formal rate increase from the fact of telling you that we really have a lot of pressure, and we can't easily close that gap at this time. We don't know what that is. And the summer is our big, that's our big driving period. That's where a lot of, a lot of the trend for the year will be determined by knowing how we get through June, July, August, and maybe even September. So that's why we are where we are now.
And your thoughts on the loss?
Well, that again, happens because costs are escalating at a faster rate than we have actually been able to raise rates.
Both.
I was going to say...
Both.
You can't fix a problem by just, you know, charging people more. You also have to get paid.
Yep, both.
Any other questions, please? Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Shannon. As I stated prior, I think a month or two ago when we first saw the slides, what I'll be interested in past today is how the conversation about generation planning and our flex bundle is going to impact the number that's placed in there with regard to that first column on maintenance, maintain growth and support growth, maintain operations and support growth. So obviously, there's an interplay with how we move forward on the flex bundle, conversations at the RAC, et cetera. So that's the part I'm going to be interested in. And obviously, the winter storm Yuri is very much, you know, at play as well as the pandemic-related bad debt that we're working towards as well, or working through. So the one that I think we have the most control over, obviously, is going to be that tranche related to power generation. So can you speak to that and what the process will be for us going forward?
Agree, I think, again, I think you're right. That is probably the one category that we have the most control over. I do think we'll get more certainty around the impacts on our receivables as we lift suspensions and continue to work with our customers. We'll be able to determine if we have a larger problem or maybe we have been overly conservative in estimating what we think our bad debt is. Until I think we start lifting those disconnects, we won't know that. I think flex power bundle, we'll continue to provide updates to the board as well as updates on overall performance. As Paula mentioned, our summer months are key. I think we're continuing to watch how our wholesale sales are performing. We'll continue to monitor that and share that back with you all as well as any impacts on winter storm Yuri, on where we are on those disputes. I think, again, I think there's just a number of uncertainties. As we progress through the year, we'll have more information, and we definitely want to share that with you all as we refresh this look to see what the final numbers and what those metrics are going to look like.
And as much specificity as we can get to the board to communicate out to the public with regard to the capital expenditures would be good, especially as we're making investments that people, I think, are more attuned to as a result of the winter storm. The grid resiliency piece, I think, is going to be something that people are very interested in. And those expenditures that are related to the recommendations that came out of the winter storm report too are going to be relevant to folks.
Quick question, and we have several rates. So when you say provisional rate, don't we have different categories of rates by customer?
We do, we do. We're looking, this is primarily looking at those residential customers.
Right, which is a big concern. But at the same time, we go back to the equity component when we're making those decisions as far as, this is where, again, RAC and our planning purposes, who's going to carry the debt?
Well, the company will carry the...
But I'm talking about rates. When we come up with the final rate structure, we're talking several rate structures, not one rate structure.
Right, we will break it down and be able to show you the commercial impacts versus the residential.
What we've shown to date has been on the residential.
Right, which again, is my concern.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Albert? If none, thank you, Ms. Albert.
Bill?
She's asking for a vote right now so we could manage to...
Do we have a motion? For, let me get this right, for the fiscal year 2022 financial plan, Part 5 Update Budget Proposal, do we have a motion on the table? Well...
I'm not ready to...
We have to.
I'm just...
Pay for it, yeah.
If I could be helpful or try to, we understand how hard this decision is for the community, and we do not come to you lightly to make a request for a budget. We are not asking for a rate increase. But every time we don't make a decision at the table here or at the council, it will continue to have a mounting effect on the financial. It will not get easier, it will only get tougher and harder. And so we're not asking for a license to do anything, but be able to manage to a number and tell you how we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask one more question.
Sure, Ms. Kim?
I might can be the person that makes the motion. But as Trustee Steen pointed out...
Can you talk in your mic, sir? We're not picking you up.
Pardon me?
Your mic?
I thought I...
Can you pull it a little bit closer?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
As Trustee Steen pointed out, we are halfway into the fiscal year, which is something that typically we wouldn't have done. We would have approved this budget some months ago. But I also understand that this is an incredibly different year with the pandemic and coming off of that, and still, to some extent, involved in it. So my question number one is, since we're six months into the budget, on the budget that you're presenting, how are we tracking on that then? We should have some pretty good tracking information if we're halfway through the budget year. Are we tracking this budget pretty well, or how would you characterize that?
So yes, sir, we are tracking, and we are tracking to these proposed budget numbers. If you look at our operating revenue, we're coming in about 22, and this is through April. I don't have my latest updates, so I'm providing what I have in front of me. But we were about 20, almost 23 million favorable on the revenue side. Our operating expenses, we're running, our O and M expenses right at the amount at 178. Our overall net income, again, we were projecting a net loss at that point in time in April. We were at $16.7 million net loss compared to the budget, which was 41.9 at this point. We've had some, we've had, I believe, the month of May was fairly strong in wholesale. The last, this last month was a little bit slower in both retail and wholesale, but we are continuing to monitor that.
Well, honestly, the wholesale line was one that troubled me because it's been on a precipitous decline since we closed Dealey. And yet, we're proposing or projecting an uptick this year. And I'm sure you've got some good rationale as to why you're going to get an uptick. But if you look at the trend line, you would expect it to continue down precipitously.
Yes.
So that was one of the lines that bothered me. I don't want to drill down to that level. I guess what I would say, Ms. Albert, is that there's a number of things about this budget that concerned me. The fact, for example, that we're going to 65% debt to equity, I talked about that earlier. The fact that we're only funding a third of our CapEx by cash, whereas in the past, we typically funded 50%. So there's a number of things, as I went through the budget, that concerned me. But on the other hand, you made a statement early on, and it's very true. Paula and her team, and I want to congratulate Paula, and I've said this before, over the last several years, you guys have done an incredible job of controlling expenses. You've taken a huge amount of fat out of this budget over the last few years, and now you're down to where you've taken out the muscle. And so I think we've played that string out about as far as we can. And so I hope that the numbers that you're projecting for next year, fiscal '23, where it shows a bit of a turnaround, in fact, happened. But it does just reiterate the fact that we're going to have to run this business very, very effectively and continue to really watch every decision we make. And because I really think we've pretty much had all the fun we're going to have in terms of expense control. There's not much more we can do, in my opinion, particularly where we've saved huge amounts in interest costs. And with interest rates near zero, how are you going to save anymore?
The refunding opportunities are...
Long story short, I think you guys have done a great job. I'm hoping that we'll see this turn as we go into fiscal '23. And so with that said, Dr. Mackey, I'm prepared to move that we approve the budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kelly to approve the motion. Do we have a second? I'll suck, okay, Mr. Mayor, the mayor is sucking the motion. And before we vote on this, I got a question. I was looking on page 18 where it says 34 million dollars that we're down. And looking at that capital outlay plan, I just, the question I have... And looking at that capital outlet plan, I just, the question I have is this budget normally approved in January, right?
Yes, sir.
Each year? Okay, it wasn't approved last January. Now, will we have the budget ready to be approved this January? Will we be working on that instead of extending it because it puts us in a, in a bind for not knowing?
Understood.
Is this something that we can work on and have that ready?
Understood.
And be presented to the board by?
As long as we don't have any crazy storm Yuri's, we're going to have a budget.
By November or December, if we could start.
We will, we're already starting on that.
Good.
That process, we've already kicked off. So we're doing our summer refresh.
Okay.
Updating growth numbers, updating sales forecast, all of that's already occurring. So we've already started the work on fiscal '23 budget when we don't have the fiscal '23.
Yes.
But we will have, again, we are going to do our best to have it on time at the January meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. I know, you know, that's why I wanted to hear you say, because I know you're going to make it happen and you and your team with Corey, y'all are going to make that happen. So I'm very pleased with that and I'm, I'll, I'll support that because I'll count on you to make that happen there. So we have a motion by Mr. Kelly, we have a sucking by the mayor. Can you call row there, Ms. Albert? Ms. Not Ms. Albert.
I think, I think we still have discussion after the motion. So, Madam CEO, you saw the, the reluctance on the part of the board. And just a question, what, what if we didn't approve the budget today? What are the consequences of that?
Well, well, probably you'd walk out the door and you'd feel the exact same as when you walked in. However, I think you're sending a tremendously challenging message to your financial stakeholders who are looking at the board to, to, to go through this and realize you still need a budget and your management team isn't, again, asking you or locking you into a rate case. And so I think it, I think it's not a good view for our financial stakeholders to know that we're trying to get the budget done for the last several months and, and even though it is tough, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to say that they're, that you're, you're, we're presenting you a very difficult situation, but to just say no. Because the only way to get a better, a better debt to equity ratio and not have net income is to actually put in a higher provisional rate increase. I mean, I, I hear you. It's not growth. Growth doesn't, growth has a sustaining incremental benefit. The only way to get to the bottom line, other than, okay, like, let's say, let's, let's say, okay, we should be a smaller company in half. That means you get half the services. And I think right now the community is telling us that we need to do more than we do today and do it better. So the, the position that the company and the management team is in is we're presenting you a business proposal for a budget and we need to move down the road and keep giving and answering the questions and addressing to make the improvements that you have and then bring you a very, a very clear and compelling rate case. But I think if the board says, wait, the answer is, wait for what? Because we have no other way to, to, to put an injection in this company other than work with the board and the council to do it.
Thank you for articulating that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Gonzalez?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Hold on.
All right. Hey, you know, I have all the confidence in you all, Ms. Cole Williams and Ms. Albert. You know, y'all have done a tremendous job to be at this level. When I look at this level and be down only 34 million dollars, you all have done a tremendous job. And to be here in July and still asking for a budget that should have been approved in January, it, it concerns me because no business would operate like that. So, thank you, Mayor.
And if I, if I might, just to provide some perspective for folks, it, I understand the pressure also. The council and the board, I think, in every city across the state right now is almost asking for the impossible. We are seeking specificity in an air, in a, in a, in a moment where there's extreme volatility across every measure of revenue. So I appreciate the pause and the concern, but I think the message coming out from our community is that we support our energy utility because we own it and we're going to do what is necessary to keep it strong. We, we frequently provide it the tools and flexibility we need financially to ensure that we can get through rough patches like this, which is one of the reasons why we're still viewed among the public utilities as one of the stable entities out there. So, you know, I hope that the degree of contemplation that's occurred today and over the last several months with regard to the budget is further proof of deliberations that occur to keep this company strong. So, again, appreciate the, the dialogue. I expect we're going to continue to have it, especially on those measures that we just talked about, including the power generation. But the message out of here should be confidence in CPS Energy to get the job done and to do it in a way that is also sensitive to, to the pressures that our, our, our red payers are experiencing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, check call row.
Yes, I'll go, I'll start and go around trustee Dean.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
No.
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Chair Dr. Mackey? So I have four to one approval of the motion.
Okay, just have Ms. Albert, Ms. Ramirez, that we have four, four ayes and one no.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, thank you, Ms. Albert, for a wonderful presentation and we'll be looking forward to hearing more progress on this as we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Albert, I want to echo that and thanks for the great job you do.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're moving on to agenda item number 11, the Tezal substation site recommendation by Mr. Leroy Perez. And this is a possible, a vote, a voting item too, discussion and possible vote.
Good afternoon, Chair Dr. Mackey and trustees. My name is Leroy Pettis. I'm here to provide you an update of our Tezal substation project. In May, I presented our recommendation to the board. We've since had our input session and I would like to thank Vice Chair Gonzalez and Chair Dr. Mackey for leading that session that we had in June. So for today's objective, I'll be providing an update on that public input session and then follow with board action for approval. So for today's agenda, I'm going to start off with providing an overview of our project, discuss the public input session that we had, provide an update of our evaluation of that feedback, give a recommendation of our site and then request approval. So here's our guiding pillars. And again, this is one that I presented that when it comes to substation projects, transmission projects, our projects are in direct alignment with the reliability pillar that you see there. Here's the project need that really reinforces that reliability pillar. So for our project need, we will be increasing capacity for residential and commercial growth in northwest San Antonio. This project will also strengthen reliability. Earlier, there was discussion about long lines and reducing their lengths to strengthen them. This is a substation project. And so when we install these substations, it also shortens the existing distribution lines that are in the area. This project is located within the San Antonio city limits. That is important because, because it's in within the city limits, it follows our internal board approval process. And we are anticipating this project to be energized completed by June of 2024. So here's a summary of our overall public involvement. One thing I would like to start off with is we internally kicked this project off in late 2019. There's a lot of internal work that has to take place before we're ready to go public with the community and ask for their input. And that was around the time when the pandemic was really getting going. So we started the input session, the, the, the public involvement with the community back in July of 2020. Because of the requirements of, we couldn't gather large gatherings, we recorded everything in a recording that we typically cover in these in-person open houses. And we presented that to the community in a pre-recorded session in July 15th of last year. And then we followed up with the second notification just to ensure, because of the pandemic and we wanted to make sure that there was some good involvement, and we sent the follow-up notification in September. We also had a meeting with Councilwoman Sannavall and a concerned resident in June. We also had the board input session. This was the first ever hybrid. We were able to stream this. And so this is the meeting, I'm going to be talking about the input. So this meeting started with a presentation of our recommended site and I provided the community details of our evaluation. After the presentation, we turned this to a community, community dialogue session where we allowed the community to ask questions. There's a picture that you can see on the left. There was 15 who signed in and were in attendance in person. A total of four tuned in over the phone, eight followed via that live stream that we were streaming. During the community dialogue session, four that were in person provided comments and questions of the project, which I and team members were able to, to answer. We then turned the meeting following that community dialogue, turned it over to a formal public comment session. There was a total of nine registered to speak, two of them ceded their time. And so there was a total of five that provided comments, of which three did it over the phone. One who had registered to speak indicated that wouldn't be there and provided their comments in writing. And lastly, part of our public involvement also included additional outreach efforts. We have a project website where we keep details of our project and also newspaper advertisements throughout the process. So I talked about, we started that input session with providing a presentation. And here is one of the slides, photo of a rendering of the substation of our recommended site, site five. This is from a street view along Gilbo Road. There in the background, you can see the substation. There on the right of the photo, you see the power lines, the transmission lines. Those two poles you see there are renderings, but that line is an existing line that runs through there. This site is adjacent to that existing transmission line. You see a wall that's part of our plans to enhance aesthetics. This helps with the visual impacts, if you will, can't see through, through the equipment. It also helps resiliency from external impacts. And also you'll see that we do have plans to leave some of the natural vegetation and also come back with vegetation to help further screen the substation. This is another rendering that we presented, I presented during the input session. Here's a different view of the substation. You can see, this is a two acre site. Again, two poles that you see on the left, closest down to the bottom are renderings. But the other poles that you see further up on top of the, that's, those are existing poles. Again, that's where the transmission line is running. We presented this, this here, you can see the wall that we're planning to put on top of the perimeter. We also plan to build a retaining wall so we can make this substation level. We also plan to leave as much of the natural vegetation along the perimeter of our property. There's some natural vegetation that we want to leave to help with some of the screening with the adjacent landowners to that. And we also will be installing more, more trees where there's opportunities to do that. So getting into the feedback that we received, the first one of that, that we received was a lot of requests to move our recommendation to either site three or site four. Here in the next two slides, I'm going to talk about some of the complexities of doing that. It, it increases impacts. We also received feedback regarding our decision to have purchased that property last year around our, and so we provided some information in your packet. You will see a letter that we provided the community in response to the feedback. But making proactive strategic property purchases is a common practice for us. We do that to give us better land ownership when, when it's needed and also to help cost mitigation. Next, we received input around construction traffic. We have since reached out to the city of San Antonio and SAPD. We're going to be looking to installing a traffic light along Gilbo to help with the traffic. There was a lot of concerns of high traffic through there. We're also going to be reaching out to the adjacent landowner to see if there's opportunities of some of the construction, construction traffic during construction to go through their property. We also received input and concerns about the deer habitat of that site. So we have committed to the community that we're going to be working with Texas Parks and Wildlife, environmental consultant, and relocating that deer safely. There was also questions on, is this substation going to, going to improve reliability? There was confusion that it's just for growth. And so we clarified, substations do bring additional capacity, but as I mentioned earlier, it also strengthens reliability in the area. Questions around flooding, standing water. We, we will, that, that rendering there show that we're going to be building what's called the detention basin. It's the, it's, it's, it's to manage discharge of water during storms. Also questions on the safety of it. We will putting, we will be installing a fence on that so that it prohibits unauthorized access into there. Another typical one is electric magnetic fields or EMF. We discuss that according to the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, that EMF at our frequency is perceived as harmless. And the last main one was around substation noise. We discussed that previous studies we've done, we do not anticipate there to be substation noise pollution, if you will, with this project. So here, I wanted to get into the first bullet that I talked about. We received comments to move it to, to site three or site four. And up at the top is a chart that we developed to help compare sites three, four and five. Again, five is our recommended site and, and we, we still recommend that site. They're in the green, those green cells signify the better result of all of these in comparison. Site five, as I communicated in May, it has the least amount of inhabited family structures that are within proximity. Some of the feedback we got during the input session is to move it to site three because there's, it's adjacent to, to renters. And it's important just to mention that our evaluation does not differentiate whether people are homeowners or renters. Site three and site four also creates impact to landowner development. During today's public comment session, there was a gentleman, Half Cost, who spoke about if, if three or four was selected, it would impact their ability to develop their, their land. Site three is in four would also require an ordinance of eminent domain and increases the risk of us having to use that. And then just lastly, sites three and four property costs are only estimates and, and those would introduce cost escalation risk where, again, site five does not. Overall, we just believe that site five minimizes the overall community impact. So again, our recommendation is still substation site five. I've already covered some of these, but it's the best environmental ranking, it's the least impact of all sites. I mentioned the feedback to move it to site three and I'm going to try to use this pointer in the back. So you could see, these, these red are all the habitable structures that you could see. These are actually multifamily structures, they're duplexes. And you can see how selecting a site such as site three, the amount of additional folks and impact that are, that are involved with such a project, to the north of site three is a nursing home. And then just to the west of it is a cell phone communication. So there's impacts. The comment, Mr. Elder Half Cost, who spoke earlier, they own site four. So they had mentioned how impacts of either site four or the yellow line, a transmission line, how it would affect their development there.
Are they residential?
I'm sorry?
Or do you have any full nursing homes or parks?
So they're not adjacent, but they would still be within 300 feet of that. Site four has, this right here is an apartment complex. They talked about how they had sold their property earlier. And so there's actually more than duplexes here. I mean, these are, these are apartment complexes here that are adjacent to site four. The same landowner that we have met and discussed, they're also adjacent to site four. So if that answered your question there, Vice Chair, yes, sir? Yes, sir. It's this church, it's this church right adjacent to the transmission line that's shown in red. They're right there and they own site four as well.
Right there?
Right there. Yeah. Yes, sir. So again, recommendation is site five. Here's just a picture of plans to enhance our aesthetics. It's just the walls. Councilwoman Sannavall was there and I did present the one to the left. It was something similar that we had done with District One. We are happy to reach out to them as well once it comes to this, if they would like to partner with us on adding art onto the wall, as you see there on the left. Here's just our governance process. We are at the last stage of our board of trustees approval process. You see there on the top. You see there on the top right. Again, it starts off with providing an informational session, the public input, and then asking for approval after we evaluate the sites. So at this time, I respectfully ask for approval for this project, for the team's recommended Substation Site Five, and to execute planning and construction of the project.
So move.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I just said so move.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Steen. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Kelly. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, none. Can you call, roll?
Yes, sir, Trustee Steen.
Aye.
No.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
No.
Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly? And Chair Dr. Mackey?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ayes and one no. Motion carries?
Yes, sorry, just, I have five total, so I had four in favor, one against.
You said four?
In favor.
And one no?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, that's four to one. Yes, Mr. Steen.
So Mr. Pettis, how long have you been doing this?
I've been being the sponsor of these type of projects at the executive level for about five years.
So I just want to say you do an excellent job, very thorough. I know you're dealing with people and their neighborhoods, and there are people that are disappointed. But I, I just imagine that anybody that's dealt with, with you in this process would feel like that everybody had a fair hearing and would listen to. So just congratulations to you.
Thank you. I have a, I have a great team who supports as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Did a wonderful job and appreciate that. We have item number 12. We can speed that up a little bit. We're a little bit behind. The Flex, Flex Power Bundle update. Kevin Polo?
Good afternoon, trustees. So I am very honored to represent the Flex Power Bundle team to provide an update to you this afternoon. So my main update, as I said, is just to provide a discussion here on our Flex Power Bundle request for proposal, including our prioritized solar selection. I'll start briefly with just an overview of the request for proposal components, talk about our evaluation process, including our security considerations, an update on our progress. I will finish with a quick discussion on stakeholder engagement and our project timeline. I do start here with the, the guiding pillars. I think as we look at Flex Power Bundle, I think we're most, believe that is most closely aligned with reliability, customer affordability, and environmental responsibility. But it does touch every one of these pillars. And so our intent as we go through the, the selection process is to pick potential partners and potential projects, you know, through the lens of these guiding pillars. I also wanted to take a minute just to talk about our cross-functional team. We've had a team of about 40 dedicated individuals from across the company that have participated in this process really for the last year plus, starting with the request for information, working through the request for proposal. At times, we've supplemented that product, that team, brought on additional resources to work through particular periods of high activity or other needs to implement or supplement our team. I think we've definitely benefited in terms of the strength of our process from the expertise from across the company. But I do want to, you know, stop and thank the team because really we would not be where we are in terms of having the successful RFI and then the RFP, you know, without the countless hours that that team has put in to design the RFP, design the RFI, and where we are today in terms of working through the evaluation process. Again, as we look at Flex Power Bundle, just as a quick refresher, we are seeking to add up to 900 megawatts of solar, up to 50 megawatts of storage, up to 500 megawatts of firming capacity. And when we look at Flex Power Bundle, and we've, we've talked about this, I think, in prior discussions, but we really look at Flex Power Bundle as our next step in the flexible path. And specifically, it's there to replace some of our aging bronic gas team units. Those units typically run during the summer. So Flex Power Bundle was designed to be a summer product, you know, to meet our summer peak. And so we do think as we look at, you know, the comprehensive build-out that we mentioned, I think at the risk management meeting, you know, as we bring that to you next year, we will be looking at Flex Power Bundle 2.0 and 3.0, and we think those will, you know, have different components. For example, Flex Power Bundle 2.0 may be more heavily based in firming capacity. But for now, we think that the makeup of Flex Power Bundle is aligned well with the, the way those bronic gas plants run, and we think it's a viable substitution. I also have a note up there at the, at the top of the slide as far as our potential prioritized solar selection. Out of the 900 megawatts of solar, we were looking to add about 200 to 250 megawatts through that early, if you will, prioritized solar selection. I'll talk more about that in a, in a slide to come. Slide seven here is just a quick overview of our, our evaluation process. We had nearly 650 different proposals. All of those went through a threshold screening process where we looked at, you know, did proposals meet certain minimum requirements, like providing a price, for example. We went through a qualitative evaluation, and then we started to split things. We looked at our, our large-scale solar projects and went through an evaluation process to shortlist candidates for our prioritized solar project. We went through a round of interviews with, with those candidates. And the projects that will get selected, we plan to move directly into negotiations and contracting. If the project was shortlisted for prioritized solar or didn't make the shortlist, it doesn't mean it's out of the Flex Power Bundle. We'll move it into the rest of our bundle candidate selection process, which is basically the, the rest of the projects. That's the evaluation we're working through right now in terms of going through a quantitative evaluation of all those shortlisted projects that have made it into our bundle selection. And as we narrow that down further, we'll look to move, move into interviews and best and final offer progress with, with our bundle candidates. I have at the bottom, though, our physical and cybersecurity assessments kind of broken out separately because that has been an underpinning really of the entire process. And slide eight, just to focus a little bit more on that security considerations. We did do a systematic and comprehensive review of our potential vendor cybersecurity framework. The interview process gave us an opportunity to gain further insight into the effectiveness of the security controls that those companies have. We've also focused on the supply chain security controls. We've been looking at, you know, the vendors, who their key suppliers are, looking at potential mergers or recent mergers and acquisitions, working to understand the impacts of foreign ownership or control or influence. That's been one of the, the concerns that we've had in terms of the presidential executive order about protecting the bulk electric system, you know, from... And that executive order, one of the things it focused on was not sourcing components, for example, from foreign adversaries. So that's been a key component of our security considerations as we've worked through the evaluation process. Back to the prioritized solar. So we did look, we ended up with six shortlisted candidates that we interviewed. We then have gone through and are working through and finalizing a qualitative evaluation of those interviews and those candidates, including a comprehensive security review. I mentioned the Bulk Power System Executive Order. We do plan to continue to bring that into consideration from our evaluation criteria. We do think it's important to who our vendors are sourcing from. But all of these projects for the prioritized solar are what I call large scales. You can see there are capacity range for those projects. The smallest one was about 125 megawatts, ranged up to 300 megawatts. So these are larger projects. We do have, I did see a large quantity of smaller scale projects, what I would call the distribution-type connected resources. Those are ones we would expect to see and receive in and around San Antonio. Those generally ranged and maxed out at about 10 megawatts. So from a prioritized solar perspective, we're really focused on the larger-scale projects. And just, you know, as a perspective, all of those projects that we saw, their commercial operation date was advertised for 2023. As far as the rest of the bundle, I think I've mentioned previously, you know, that we did see really a staggering response to our RFP. Very happy with that. We got 650 proposals, as I mentioned, 43,000 megawatts almost of capacity was quoted to us. So we are working through that evaluation process for the remainder of the bundle. We expect that those projects will be in a position as far as contract negotiations and such. We could award those projects here later this year in the, in the fourth quarter. But we are working actively through that process of evaluation. I did want to touch also on our stakeholder engagement. Just some recent highlights are shown here on the slide. So Mr. Frank Almerez presented at the Z Prime Solar Storage Fest earlier this month. Members of my team presented to the Citizens Advisory Committee earlier this month, Taseef Mohammed and Krista Davis gave that presentation. Obviously, today, we're here at the Board of Trustees meeting later this week. Paula will be participating in a United States Energy Association briefing along with the Electric Power Research Institute. And looking forward to next month, we are planning a town hall meeting, hybrid format, both virtual and in person. But again, the focus of that will be our flexible path, flex step, flex power bundle. And then I'll end here just with a, a quick view of our, our project timeline. As I've mentioned, you know, we expect to have not only the prioritized solar done, but the balance of our projects ready for award here in, in the fourth quarter. We do show stakeholder engagement, again, I think, as an underpinning of the process. We've started our stakeholder engagement when we, as we were getting ready to launch the RFP. And we've continued it throughout the process, and we're looking to, again, really ramp up those stakeholder engagement and community outreach activities. So I'll be happy to pause for any questions.
Okay, thank you. We have any board members, any questions?
I do. Are any of these going to go through the, through the committee, the Technology and Resilience Committee? The vendors, any of this bids for consideration going to go through the committee?
I'm sure we can. I know we've talked to, in the past, I think, to the Operations Oversight Committee, but we can talk to other committees as well to make sure...
Well, not other committees. I, I think, I would highly recommend they go through the operations and then vet it through, if you don't mind, Chairman? Through the Technology and Resilience Committee. We haven't had a chance to really put a focus on that, but we're getting close to making substantial investments. And so I want to make sure that they go through a vetting process prior to voting on anything. That's okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I hope we can continue to get updated monthly, if, if only just to check in on the progress. But could you go back to the timeline? I'm a little unclear on the, the pace of this. So the, the prioritized solar selections will be done in Q4?
The prioritized solar, sir, we believe we'll be ready with that announcement, hopefully as early as, as late next month. Our position to. We're narrowing down to our final, our final candidate, hopefully, that we'll begin negotiations with.
And that'll come back to the board for final approval? Or is that just done administratively at this point?
Sorry. So the, the provisions of the procurement policy indicate that we run a test to see what the size of the procurements are. And I can't remember, is it five or 10%?
10%.
10%. So that's required, but we are absolutely going to bring that in front of you for your input and guidance. And if you're uncomfortable and you want to take a vote, we can do that, and we will also bring it to the committee, which we'll be, we'll be able to do the operations oversight and the technology committee, but we probably will have to ask for a special session.
Okay. Yes, please. Yes, yes, we can do that.
Okay. And then Q4 for the rest of the bundle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, you just, the, the blue bar there is confusing me because that looks like it's coming back in '21.
We will, I think that's...
But it'll be Q4, '22 for the rest of the bundle. You're doing the prioritized projects that start in next month.
I think that is the, the point that, that Trustee Steen pointed. Our fiscal years throw everybody off when we're trying to...
Yeah, I, I think we, we mixed the slide up. That timeline is, shows calendar year 2021, but we should be consistent with fiscal year, calendar year.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Polo? Well, thank you. Great job in explaining everything, and you're going to keep us updated next month again?
I'll be back. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. And then we'll meet with other committees, Operation and the Technology Committee. We'll, we'll start working on that right there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for...
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Presentation. At this time, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Kelly made a motion, adjourn.
I'll second, but I've, I've got a question.
Second by Mr. Steen now. Do we have any questions?
So we posted this, the PFC meeting. It says in the regular meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees will be followed by a 15-minute break, then by a meeting of the SA Energy Acquisition Public Facility Corporation within approximate duration of 20 minutes. And my question is, are we, are we, are we committed to that 15-minute break? Or can we just go roll right into the other one?
Sir, I believe that as long as we don't start any earlier than this, we are fine with waiving...
No, I would, I would think that, wouldn't all of you all want to go ahead and... Do you want to take a 15-minute break or...
No, I think we can take about a five-minute break. Then we can take a five-minute break.
Just a...
Motion to adjourn still.
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second, but we're in discussion.
What mean?
We had a motion and a second. We're in discussion, but we never...
Yes, I know. All in favor say aye.
What event?
Aye.
We're still talking about the meeting. Did you want to say anything about the PFC?
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Kelly, well, second by Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.